Ready? You guys are ready, okay. You guys are ready. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Lawrence City Commission Meeting. Good afternoon. We're going to start today with recognitions and proclamations. We have someone here to accept their proclamation, recognition of the Mad Greek. Come up and tell us who you are and sign in or just come and say your name. There's the podium right there. Right there at the podium.
Hi, everyone. My name is Theo Tagtalyanidis. I'm the new owner of the Mad Greek for the last five years. As you all know, this establishment has been in business since 1988. And we, as new owners, were very happy to be owners of that establishment with such gravity and good history in the downtown Lawrence.
Well, welcome this afternoon and we'll read the recognition.
Thank you.
Whereas, the Mad Greek has been a Lawrence institution since 1988 and has been in its current location on Massachusetts Street in beautiful downtown Lawrence since 1993. And whereas, the restaurant was founded by George and Peggy Cridos, whose commitment to quality Greek and Italian cuisine brought three decades of success and economic benefit to Massachusetts Street. And whereas, in 2014, in their much deserved retirement, George and Peggy passed along the legacy of the Mad Greek to their longtime family friends, Theo and Deb Tagtalyanidis, who have shown the same passion as the Cridos family while adding their own flair. Hope I got that name okay. Now therefore I, Stuart Bowley, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby recognize the 30th anniversary of the Mad Greek and look forward to the next 30 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, we aged the Greek.
That'll work perfectly for me. Thank you so much. Next, we'll have the proclamation on Billy Mills Day.
Excuse me. Bonjour, monoguishko kueik parasno kanada jenukas. Hello, my name is Carol Cadill Blackwood, and this is my dad Steve Cadill, and we are here to present the proclamation for Billy Mills Middle School Day, or for Billy Mills for November 3rd, but that will be in conjunction with the rededication of the school. Do you want to say something, Dad? Okay. Well, as you know, the school board, the Lawrence School Board, approved, voted seven to zero on the renaming of South Middle School to Billy Mills Middle School, and we would like to invite everyone here to the rededication on Saturday, November 3rd at 9:00 a.m.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to need a little help with the name. Can you help, tell me how I should try?
Temakose Tahila?
Temakose Tahila? Okay, thank you. Whereas, Billy Mills, Ogallala Lakota, also known as Temakose Tahila, meaning respects the earth, loves his country, was born on June 30, 1938, in Pine Ridge, South Dakota, and orphaned at age 12 while growing up in poverty on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. And whereas, Billy graduated high school from Haskell Institute, now Haskell Indian Nations University, where he earned numerous track awards and would go on to earn a full athletic scholarship to the University of Kansas. And whereas, while attending KU, Billy was named an NCAA All-American Cross Country Runner three times, won the 1960 Big Eight Championship, and as a member of the track team, won the 1959 and 1960 Outdoor National Championships. And whereas, after graduating from KU with a bachelor's degree in physical education in 1962, Billy was a commissioned officer in the U.S. Marine Corps. While serving in the Marines and qualifying for the 1964 Tokyo Olympics, Billy set an Olympic record and became the only American to win an Olympic gold medal in the 10,000-meter race. And whereas, Billy was inducted into the U.S. Olympic Hall of Fame in 1984, received the KU Award for Distinguished Service in 1993, the Presidential Citizens Medal from President Obama in 2012, awarded the Theodore Roosevelt Award, the highest honor bestowed by the NCAA in 2014, and received the President's Council on Sports, Fitness and Nutrition Lifetime Achievement Award in 2015. And whereas, Billy founded the nonprofit Running Strong for American Indian Youth, an organization that supports cultural programs and provides health and housing assistance for Native American communities. And whereas, Billy Mills' humanitarian work, perseverance, and conviction has made him a role model to all youth and an inspiration to countless others to follow your dreams. And whereas, the Board of Education of Lawrence Public Schools, USD 497, voted on February 26, 2018, to approve renaming the former South Middle School to Billy Mills Middle School. Now therefore I, Stuart Bowley, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 3rd, 2018, to be Billy Mills Day. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed below on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak to an item that's been pulled off the consent agenda will be limited to three minutes for comments. Is there anything on the consent agenda that a member of the commission would like to pull off? Is there anything that a member of the public would like to remove from the consent agenda? All right. I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda, including all claims.
We have a motion from Commissioner Herbert, second from Commissioner Ananda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Now we'll move on to public comment. The public is allowed to speak to any items or issues, except those scheduled on the consent agenda or regular agenda portions of the agenda, after first being recognized by the mayor. Each person will be limited to three minutes for public comment, and we have a clock right over here. As general practice, the commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Rather, they will refer the items to staff for follow-up if necessary. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, state their name and address. Speakers should address all comments and questions to the commission. General public comment.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Sally Zagray. I'm the Executive Director of Downtown Lawrence, Inc., our downtown business association. I'm here on behalf of our organization, and there are some other downtown Lawrence businesses and DLI members who are here also tonight. For the past 46 years, Downtown Lawrence, Inc.'s mission has been to preserve, protect, and promote downtown Lawrence as the retail service and professional governmental entertainment and social center of our community. Our goal every day for nearly five decades has been to provide the best, most welcoming, and enjoyable experience to everyone who comes downtown to spend time socializing, shopping, dining, and enjoying our nationally acclaimed historic business district. We are fortunate to have so many locally owned, acclaimed, independent businesses with hard-working, dedicated owners, sometimes representing several generations of our community history, located here. In the last several years, I hear more and more often from business owners about the struggles and challenges that downtown is experiencing in the face of increasing numbers of transients, vagrants, and aggressive panhandlers. This is on top of other concerns I'm hearing from residents, visitors, and friends, that downtown's atmosphere has changed, and they no longer feel secure here and/or that when they're downtown, they're solicited regularly by panhandlers, sometimes multiple times in a one-block stretch. I myself am witness to a multitude of inappropriate and aggressive behaviors each day among the individuals and groups that are panhandling. These include public drunkenness and intoxication, verbal and physical fights, and threatening behavior. My children, who attend LMCMS, are downtown every day alongside their friends, and they witness these behaviors as well. They don't feel entirely safe or at ease in this environment, nor do many visitors or downtown employees. Massachusetts Street and downtown are the number-one tourist attraction in our state. As such, it is an economic engine that is important to the city's economy and economic viability. If downtown is not successful, there are financial ramifications, namely in sales and property tax collections, employment by small business owners, and the many financial and economic ripples that extend outward. There are a number of people who are downtown every day panhandling, who've been doing this for many years, and they are well aware of and familiar with the services that we are so fortunate to have in our community to help those in need. Police, Parks and Rec staff, and Burt Nash all work hard to educate them on a daily basis. We want to request that city staff look into drafting a stricter ordinance or set of ordinances that will restrict panhandling downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Matthew Falk. I live on Lawrence Avenue. I also work for the Burt Nash Community Mental Health Center. I am the team leader for our homeless outreach program, and I work with virtually all the service providers who provide services for the homeless community. The one thing I'm here to stress is that we do have social services in the community, but they are entirely insufficient to meet the needs of the population that is experiencing homelessness within the community. The other thing I need to, or want to, or I'm going to express is that seeking punitive action is not and has not been historically an effective way of dealing with the problem of homelessness. So as we think about this issue, and I'm not discounting the problems, I'm not discounting the problems that the lady before me mentioned, but as we're thinking about this issue and moving forward, as a community, we need to think about what actually is effective and what is going to really be a concerted effort to address this problem. It's not a problem that we as social service providers can solve only on our own, and it's a problem that we're going to have to have buy-in and partnerships from the private sector as well. And I myself am opening myself to anyone who would like to contact me at the Burt Nash Center to talk about partnerships, to talk about things that we might be able to do as a community to address this issue, because it is a very serious issue. You can call Burt Nash at 843-9192 and ask to talk with Matthew Falk. We are seeking private partnerships or partnerships with people in the private sector, downtown businesses, and other folks who are willing to come in and help. If we are going to be the community that we want to be, which I believe we want to be, all the people that I talk with say that we want to be, which is a community that helps, a community that doesn't just punish people for being poor or for other issues that they may be struggling with, such as mental health issues and substance abuse issues, then we need to be the community that actually does offer that level of help. So when you consider moving forward about dealing with the downtown issue, I would ask that you heavily consider not pursuing punitive actions. There will be further fallout from this. The jail and the county and its law enforcement duties is already having an extreme problem with maintaining their jail. Further citation will only further that problem, and it will only increase the likelihood of challenges that those individuals will face in seeking to overcome their individual problems. More legal action means they're less likely to find jobs, they're less likely to get housing, and the truth of the matter is, as you know, and I thank you for going through the study, the housing market study, is that...
Mayor?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Affordable housing does not exist here. I mean, we have a huge crisis right now, as you know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matthew. Other general public comment?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. My name is Ted Boyle, North Lawrence Improvement Association. I agree with downtown Lawrence, the problem that we have down there. And I'd just like to comment that, you know, I live right on the levee, and about 15 years ago, the city had to remove a camp on the levee, and it was about a half a mile from the bridge, and there was about a dozen people that lived down there. And at that time, I know the city offered those people a job with Parks and Rec because they thought that the outdoor environment and that type of deal would suit their job description, and also offered affordable housing for them, and not one individual took the city up on that offering. And to this day, I can sit on my back deck and I can see some of the same individuals that were there 15 years ago, and every morning around nine o'clock, he goes down the levee, they go down the levee, go downtown, and then at night, they come back, and they don't, their camp isn't in the city limits, it's on the other side of the boat ramp, which puts it out in the county. And there's another camp up by the Turnpike Bridge. And these individuals are professional, some of them are professional transients, you know, when it starts getting cold, they'll head south. When it gets warmer weather, they come up here, and they seize the opportunity of Lawrence and their available kind-heartedness, you might say, and tolerance of their lifestyle. So something does need to be done. I have been downtown and been, come up and ask me for money, and if you say no, then they get a little aggressive, and I just tell them, you know, I'll knock you out if you keep messing with me, and they kind of lay off that deal. So, but something needs to be done because it doesn't look good for the visitors that come to our community and spend the money. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ted.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Dan Hughes. I own a retail business downtown, one that's been there for 46 years and employs 25 people. And as a retailer, I can only speak to the homelessness issue from that perspective, but as a retailer, I counsel my team every day that the adage, "The customer is always right," is not correct. I don't believe the customer is always right, but I believe the customer thinks they're always right. And we, as retailers, have to live in that perception. The facts may or may not be germane to the subject when we're talking. So, because we live in our customers' perception, I approach the homelessness issue and vagrancy issue downtown with that lens, and that is that the perception amongst my consumers and people that are going to come downtown is that things have slid in downtown Lawrence. That may not be the true facts of the matter, they may or may not be professional transients in our community, but the perception is that downtown is a place where you're going to be harassed and find empty storefronts and not be a pleasant place to shop, especially when cast against the obvious other option, which is to stay at home and shop online in your pajamas. So, I'm not really exactly sure what the solution is, but it's obvious to me, having been downtown for 30 years, that this is about as bad as it's ever been. And when I have to go and kindly ask people to get off of my steps in the middle of a business day and get greeted with a pretty pointed lesson on what the rules are, it's apparent to me that the people that are hanging out down there know exactly where the goalposts are, and it's apparent to me that my customers would rather shop elsewhere than be confronted with that. So, I don't have the solutions, but perception is reality, and it's a real problem downtown. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lauren Henderson. I am retired, but I used to be the director of the Lawrence Community Shelter, which for many years was in downtown Lawrence. I have just brief remarks, but I really wanted to say that I thought we had been through this some years ago, when the city commission passed ordinances having to do with panhandling, and that those ordinances were within the constitutional guidelines. Panhandling is allowed, if you will. Any rate, it's something for us to look into, the whole issue of homelessness, panhandling is just one aspect of that. At the shelter, we do not encourage, did not encourage people to, in fact, we discourage them into panhandle, tried to do things that we could get around it. We have the parking meters that the city donated downtown in the 700, 800, 900 blocks for people to make donations, and they can tell a homeless person, "I'm not going to give money to you, I'm going to give it to a program." We had a little card also to give to homeless people that people could carry with them, get them in stores, and say, "Well, here are services if you need something." Even though they know the rules, they know where the services are, it gives you a kind of response that's not aggressive or hostile to them, and it eases the situation perhaps in some way. Any rate, I also support Matt Falk's offer to discuss this. This is a, the issue of panhandling, the issue of homelessness in our community and in our country is terribly complicated. People do not choose to be homeless. So I give you my telephone number, 764-2095. That's my cellphone. I don't have an office, but I would be happy to be part of a discussion to talk about responses and what we might be able to do to help the situation downtown. That in mind, I want to say that I am also proceeding to try and open a drop-in center for the homeless in downtown, or not smack downtown, but on the edge of downtown, someplace that would be convenient for homeless people to get off the street. It would be just a drop-in center, a refuge, if you will, from extreme heat or cold, a place that'll be open a few hours a day. I've met with the city planning commission, starting the paperwork, so you'll be hearing more about that, but it's, it's, it's a kind of response, if you will, to try and help the situation. I see it as a help for the situation that the homeless people themselves are in, but also it gets people off of the street. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Debbie Rascal. I'm an owner and managing partner of Limestone. We're in the 800 block of Massachusetts, and I'm just interested in the topic. I mean, obviously, everybody who's spoken has really good points. I'd just like to add and reiterate that, yeah, it's a serious problem. It's hard enough running a business downtown. I appreciate the complexity of it, I appreciate the perspective of, you know, people that just want to try to do the kindest, right thing for these people who, who it seems obvious, some of them at least, you know, have serious mental issues. I don't know if, if our state government changes and we have expanded Medicare, if that's going to be of any help, I don't know. And one thing that comes to my mind is, you know, are there other towns, similar towns of our size, that have programs that have had some success in this area? Because, you know, I'll just very, very briefly, you know, some of the issues we've had. I am sometimes concerned for our employees' safety in the mornings when they come in early. We've had distressing... We've had distressing things left on our back porch. You know, we've had customers be harassed, we've had employees be harassed. And, and, you know, I feel for these people, I truly do. I just, you know, it'd be great if we could see if there's anything that anybody else is doing that could work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kay Meisel. I am a financial advisor with Ameriprise Financial. My office is located in the bank tower at Ninth and Mass. We have been a downtown firm for 39 years. And I have increasingly found that my clients are afraid to come downtown to meet with me due to safety concerns. Typically, they would come downtown, they would have lunch or breakfast before or after the meeting, they would shop, and now they're unwilling to do so because they are simply afraid of harassment or other issues that they might face when they come downtown. I do think this is a matter of perception. And the police are unable to take any action because there's no ordinance on the books that gives them power to do so. I know this is a complex issue, and I am a compassionate person, but I also want people to come downtown to shop and work and eat and support our local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Other general public comment?
My name's Erin Adams.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
My name's Erin Adams.
Thank you.
I'm a lifetime resident of downtown Lawrence, East Lawrence, employee. And I'm a pedestrian. And walking to and from work in the morning and home at night in the dark can be terrifying. My coworkers are afraid of the parking garage at night. My bookkeeper at work won't come downtown at night to finish his job. He'll only come early in the morning. I am constantly cleaning up urination, vomit, trash, beer bottles, cans. I've seen, I've become a vigilantious sort. I'm the person who runs out to help other people when they're being yelled at. I'm not big enough to do that. I would like to see change.
Thank you.
My name is Brady Flannery. Good evening. I represent Weaver's Department Store Downtown. And we are celebrating our 161st anniversary sale, all of which have been on Massachusetts Street. Our proud home for that time. And I believe downtown's best days are ahead of it. I would like downtown to resemble the same thing the rest of our community represents, a welcoming place, a welcoming place not only for all residents of Lawrence, but also the rest of our guests in our community. Facing any of these challenges, and the laundry list is large. We've heard just a few examples are concerning. Seeing this uptick is alarming. So I am very grateful to our government, the discussions we've had with the police and other community leaders. I'm here to help, and everybody else is too. So I look forward to your willingness to help us find a solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jenny Padilla. I work downtown, and I'm also a resident here. I've been a Lawrence resident for the past seven years. Lawrence is my home now, and I care about our community. I feel we, as a community, would be going backwards by prohibiting our fellow community members to seek income by panhandling. Panhandling is not harmful. It would however be harmful if poverty and neediness were to be criminalized. It would be harmful if people in this community who panhandle were targeted and not allowed their exercise to, their, exercise their right to occupy public space. It would be like banning people from collecting donations for charity for people in need from occupying public space. People should not be punished, shamed, or harassed for being poor and homeless. What also concerns me is the idea that removing people who panhandle from the street will be better for business and make for a better shopping experience. Since moving to Lawrence seven years ago, I have seen downtown continue to grow and prosper with the presence of people who panhandle. I feel dealing with some personal discomfort when crossing paths with a person who panhandles outweighs banning and punishing the homeless population from panhandling on the street. And I agree with a couple of the other people that came up and feel that it is a bigger issue, that maybe we should explore other routes to take instead of criminalizing the poor.
Hi, everybody. My name is Emily Peterson. I own Merchants Pub and Plate with my husband TK at the corner of Eighth and Mass. We've been open for about five years, so I have a more limited scope on this issue. What it really comes down to for us is an issue of harassment. We've had some individuals recently that have been very aggressive, very outspoken. And it makes people uncomfortable, it makes our guests uncomfortable, especially with patio dining. And we do our best to deal with that situation. We really want everybody to feel welcome in downtown Lawrence, no matter their background. And what it really comes down to for us is our guests feeling very uncomfortable with the aggressive sentiments being yelled at them, for them being harassed if they're not responding to the individual that's speaking to them. And then that causes us to take action, which sometimes takes 45 minutes to an hour. And then it's further disruption, of course, because we have police come down, we're filing a report, we have a manager off the floor who's taking time to speak to that police officer to be as thorough and as helpful as we possibly can in the situation. And it's just, it's, it's really become something for us that's too challenging. And so now what we're trying to do is just dismiss it as much as possible, and that's contributing to the problem further, we feel. So it's a very hard spot for us to be as a small business in hospitality, people who are patronizing our business at all times of day, to be confronted with something so aggressive. We also realize it's a very complex issue. We have sympathy and support for people who are struggling socially in our community, economically in our community, and we want to help in any way that we can. But we have to figure out a way to balance those things so that we can all be prosperous and all be comfortable in our environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lucas Thompson, and I own Mass Street Soda Downtown. We've been here for four years now. And we've since expanded into Kansas City and to a place called City Market there, where it has a similar issue. There are a lot of homeless people, there are a lot of buskers down there. The main difference is that it's a private property inside a public street. So they have certain things that they can, they can do in a private property that you can't do in a public property. Nobody has really kind of given us a solution, and there's really not one solution to give. Obviously, it's a very complicated issue. It's one that we need to make sure that we take care of people. I don't care who they are, but people need to be taken care of. On the other hand, there are people that have been coming into our shop and said that they will not come back because they were harassed on the street, which is a big deal. Downtown Lawrence is not prospering. We are losing retail. If we don't have retail to, to go with the definitely, the delicious restaurants, the bars, the entertainment downtown, I don't think downtown Lawrence is going to ever recover. That's just my opinion. But I think we need to encourage retail. And it's hard to encourage retail when we hear from, it's not just one person, there are two people that are telling us this. It's multiple people saying that the harassment downtown is becoming worse. They're using shock signs to get attention that are vulgar. And a lot of our customers are kids, and it's not something parents want their kids to come downtown and see as well. I don't know what the solutions are. Downtown Kansas City uses a private security firm to deal with people compassionately. We have had somebody arrested in our store in downtown Lawrence before because they came in and created a nuisance in the store. In downtown Kansas City, they are a third-party firm who don't carry weapons. They, they know the people, and they get them help. And they, they encourage people to go other places. It's not an easy thing to do. That's as much as I have to say. But I just, I will say that it's, it's tough being a downtown retailer, competing with online sales places, corporate companies. It's just not an easy thing to do, and I hope we find a solution.
Thanks.
Sorry, I didn't bring my small notebook today. I'll start as I always do by telling you that it makes me, oh, sorry, Meredith Moore.
Thank you, Meredith.
I own Wonder Fair Downtown, and I'm downtown all day and often all night. I'll start as I always do by telling you that it makes me very nervous to stand up here and address this room publicly. And usually, the statement is a waste of my precious three minutes, but today it isn't. I think it's these small acts of bravery when our choices allow us to be slightly uncomfortable or made vulnerable that we most fully participate in our communities. And I think that makes the effort worthwhile. I wonder if, as business owners, we could carry this idea forward into those moments when we interact with panhandlers near our businesses, or when we have to respond to the anxious customers who say they'd rather avoid the downtown than interact with members of the homeless population who make them uncomfortable. And on this issue, I believe we can and should lead by example instead of transferring responsibility for this issue to law enforcement. To speak specifically to my experience at Wonder Fair, our position is inconsistent with some of the other businesses that have spoken out. In summer months downtown, we usually see more panhandling, but this summer didn't seem much different from the others. One large sign-carrying guy, to the contrary, he should probably be asked to go. I'm curious, though, if there's any data that documents the problem being more widespread this year than others. We've not had any complaints about this issue from customers. And in fact, a customer recently asked me if I thought John, who often sits in front of Wonder Fair, would like to have the case of La Croix she had in her car if he was thirsty. He did, and he shared it with all of our staff. No customers have suggested to me that this keeps them from shopping downtown, and our business continues to grow each year. For what should be obvious reasons, loitering can't be made illegal in downtown Lawrence. It's the heart of the city and a vibrant public space. All should be welcome, and any such ordinance that makes loitering illegal would likely be selectively enforced, either by police or by shop owners, and then could be used to target minorities and young people, and perhaps people of color. At a time when we must be intentionally and mindfully working to decrease our jail population, this issue should be a non-starter, in my opinion. We would actively oppose any new ordinances that allow for heightened policing of the downtown. While police presence may make some community members feel more safe, we can't be blind to the increasingly public awareness that that's not the case for all persons, and particularly for persons of color. These are also our customers, and we want to take a stand in this moment to ensure that all efforts done here today help create a downtown that is welcoming for all people who want to come there to shop and to feel safe. Creating additional touchpoints for police for minor infraction issues might not achieve this, both because it would deter our police resources from the community at large, and because it may not have its desired effect to ensure the downtown is more safe. We don't need to look to other cities to know that this is true. In May of this year, during a two-week Click It or Ticket campaign, I'll stop there because you can fill in the gap. Thank you so much for your time. I'm going to give you all some nice new pens. Right all the way. We got, we got lots.
Okay, any other general public comment? Items not on our agenda this evening? Okay, and as a general practice, we don't discuss or debate these items. We refer them to staff or follow up if necessary. I think that's appropriate with this issue. So I think we'll just pass this on to management.
Very good. Mayor, we'll, we'll follow up with the city manager, and we'll provide some information back to you.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to thank everybody for coming to speak to this tonight. I know it's not easy to stand up there and talk. I can remember doing that myself 10 years ago. So, thank you all. I really appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on now. To our regular agenda items. The first item is to receive a presentation from the Kansas Department of Transportation.
Good evening.
Now, let's make sure we get that door closed back there, please. Thank you.
Commissioners, Mayor, thank you for having me. My name's Aaron Fritz. I'm with the Kansas Department of Transportation. I also have Robin Arthur with me. She's HNTB, our consultant's PI director. I'm here tonight to talk about the South Lawrence Traffic Way. I'm an informal person, so if you have any questions as I go through this, please stop me. This is to inform you, to inform the public, and provide information about the upcoming study we're undertaking. So I appreciate your time. I don't have a lot of depth. Certainly, that's intended for questions and the process. So I want to make sure we get through this so that we can get to any questions that are. I'm going to briefly cover a little bit of background on the project. The term SEIS, you're going to hear thrown around a lot, so I'm going to try to attempt to explain that to everybody. Most importantly, our public engagement plan. KDOT's very committed to making sure that the public has a voice in any of the projects we do. Certainly, the task force that's ongoing right now about the future of the Highway Program is an example of that. And in the past, what we've done with other portions of the SLT. Finally, we'll cover what upcoming events we have, and then who to contact if you have any questions. All right, so I get asked this a lot, why another study? So many participated in a study we held in 2014 to 2016 that was led by HNTB and other staff at KDOT. This was a concept study that looked at the west leg, which runs from basically I-70 in the west to US-59 to connect up to the east leg. This reevaluated the original 1990 EIS, which is the Environmental Impact Statement. And it tried to look at concepts to address the fact that we have a two-lane facility that connects with many at-grade and interchanges up to I-70 at the KTA. During the course of the study, there was a lot of opportunity for public feedback. And in spring 2016, as you can see here, we heard a lot of feedback with concerns about the northern junction. So at that time, KDOT consulted with the Federal Highway Administration about our future actions. And it was decided then, in the course of the last few years, to pursue a supplemental environmental impact statement. So in September of this year, we began this study, and this will last for the next three years. So what is an SEIS? So an environmental impact statement is a document required by the NEPA process. It evaluates proposed improvements, both on the natural and man-made environment. In our case, we have completed one in 1990, and then a supplemental one in 2008 for the east leg. Many of you are familiar with the east leg. It starts at US-59. It's the new roadway that connects up to the east at K-10, 23rd Street. We're pursuing a supplemental. We're not starting from scratch. We've already had that document established. But there have been changes over the few years. We're talking about access changes and changes with things that occurred from development and other issues. There was already a preferred alternative selected in that 1990 EIS. And we want to address anything that's changed since then. We're revisiting the purpose and need for the project to address local street congestion, but also look at enhancing safety and other items. And as part of this process, we will be obtaining public comment about that purpose and need, so it's not in a silo. And as you can see, here's the, the history about the 1990 and then 2008. All right, so here's the study area. And as you can see, everything in yellow highlights what we will be evaluating. So it starts up in the west at La Compton Road and at I-70 and K-10 junction with the KTA. It also includes US-40 because it's a state highway and has connectivity concerns with previous comments we've heard. and has connectivity concerns with previous comments we've heard at the north junction. It continues to the east on the west leg down to US-59 and then terminates at 23rd Street and K-10. Many have asked and will continue to ask, why is the east leg being considered? Because it's already open. It's a four-lane freeway. Part of the reason we're evaluating it is we are considering many different funding options, one of which could be tolling. And so, whatever we decide has an impact on the entire corridor, not just on the west leg itself. So, we're incorporating that as well. It was the original 1990 EIS that covered this entire corridor, so it's not just strictly the west leg. It does look at the east leg improvements. However, we do not anticipate any additional right-of-way acquisition or any physical improvements. If anything were to occur, say as tolling, you'd see new gantry gates and things of that nature, but not any changes to what has already been built. So, here's the process. I won't go into detail. That's part of what we'll talk about at our public meetings, but as you can see, we start with the concept study, work through a purpose and need. We look at criteria for screening to determine which alternatives rise to the top. We will evaluate which ones are feasible, which ones are not, if there's any fatal flaws. We'll narrow that down to reasonable alternatives that have merit, and then eventually select a preferred alternative, which will then be allowed for a public hearing and agency review. And then finally, we'll issue a record of decision with this SEIS. This is a similar process that was done in 2008. The point I want to emphasize is that along this process are many different opportunities for public comment. And so, with that, I'll go into the public engagement plan. So, here is what the consultant, Federal Highways, KTA, and KDOT have put together. You can see a lot of different meetings. The key is, is that some of these are fixed. For example, we're gonna have a public meeting in the coming months, but many are flexible. For example, kiosks, those can change times when we post information. Certainly, if concerns arise, we may filter out with additional kiosks. One of the examples is also the web meeting. We're gonna host a Webtown Hall. That specific date has not been set. It's flexible based on how we pursue public comment and get feedback. So, like I mentioned, we have some upcoming events. The project website is under development. It's nearly done. The hope is that it'll be active by November 1st, by the end of October, based on the schedule we've sent with our consultant. Likewise, we have our first advisory group meeting this Thursday. That group is made up of a variety of individuals, some of which are city staff, county staff, members from the city of La Compton, the city of Perry. We have also included individuals such as Heritage Baptist Church. Haskell Indian Nations University is sending two representatives. We've also reached out to a former council member, Mike Amick, and of various other groups to try to get a representative cross-section of the community, not just city itself, but into the county and into the neighboring counties, even including commuters that travel from the Kansas City to Topeka Corridor. This group is intended to provide a voice to the project team and to gather feedback from their constituents. This is in response particularly to what concerns we heard in 2016 about the north junction. The hope is with this advisory group, we'll be able to gather that feedback. And then, as I mentioned, we have a tentative public meeting scheduled in November. We're still securing some details, but certainly, there will be a press release and information shared with the advisory group and many others, like KDOT always does, to make sure. So, we obviously encourage everybody to participate in that meeting. I can tell you, it'll likely be at Southwest Middle School because we anticipate a large crowd to be able to provide their feedback. Last but not least, I'm here today. My contact info is provided. Lori Ariano is KDOT's Director of Communications. She's also our point of contact if you have any questions. And last but not least, this is the email address that anybody can send any questions, comments, requests to if you want a presentation like this. Just send out a request to that email. That will also be the website domain when it's open, and that'll allow us to meet any needs for anybody that has comment. And with that, that is all I have to share. I will entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Aaron. Questions for Aaron?
Is there a member of the current city commission that's on this group?
Not current, no.
Wouldn't you like one?
Would you like to volunteer to be part of it?
Well, it just seems odd that there's not one on there.
Well, part of the reason we reached out to city staff, county staff, as representatives of more technical nature, but we also have reserved seats that we have not named yet based on getting feedback from the commission. So, for example, we have a current city council member for the city of La Compton who's on that, on our advisory group, and we're anticipating three to four slots to be filled based on that advisory group.
So, you had former council member, Mike Amick, on there, who's a wonderful person. So, who would he be representing?
Well, certainly, he would provide insight if he is elected. If he's not elected, he understands concerns from the previous, but he was recommended from a variety of individuals to be a voice.
I would recommend a current city commissioner be on that committee in some fashion.
Other questions for Aaron?
I had another one.
Sure, go ahead.
So, what are the options that are including Highway 40 that connects up past K-10? Is that East 600 Road is Highway 40? Maybe you should go back to the map.
Sure.
So, you have on your map the one that was actually labeled Highway 40 there to the left of current K-10. What are the options that include that stretch of road leading to I-70?
So, we have not screened out any initial alternatives other than those were previously shown in 2016. Part of the process is to gain input, not only on the purpose and need, but on the screening criteria to help select alternatives. Because of the concerns we heard in 2016, we have not set forth specific alternatives. Now, there are certain considerations we have already in place. KDOT would like to see a system-to-system interchange at K-10 I-70. There's an option for an interchange of La Compton Road, but how we connect US-40, Farmer's Turnpike, these local roads to K-10 is up for discussion. That's part of the reason we're going through this process.
So, US-40 is highlighted because you still haven't determined where you want the high-speed interchange to be off of I-70? Is that what you're saying?
US-40 is also included because it's a state highway and has connectivity to K-10. So, whether it connects at La Compton Road or other locations, it's still being considered because there have been concerns about traffic being shifted onto US-40 because they would potentially avoid a toll or because they don't want to use alternate means besides Farmer's Turnpike.
What county commissioner is on your group?
We don't have a county commissioner. We have county staff.
They might want to be on there, too.
Well, I will say respectfully, this is a group that is decided on by KDOT and Federal Highways. We do preserve four seats, and we will take into consideration what you've suggested. But part of what we wanted to do was get more public input from non-commissionsers, such as, like I said, we've asked a commuter to be part of the group. We also reached out to Heritage Baptist Church based on their feedback from the 2016 study. But given your request, we'll talk to both the county and yourself and see what we can do.
Yeah, if you think that Amick might be elected in some fashions, and therefore, if so, then he should be on your group, then it seems odd that you don't think a current city or county commissioner should not be on there.
Well, I think we're in the question time here, not the conclusion time.
I just finished my question, so that's perfect.
Other questions for Aaron?
I have one question. Is there a reason why it takes three years? What's the, why has it taken so long?
So, part of the, that's a very good question. Part of the reason it takes so much time is that for the NEPA process, we have required review windows. So, certain documents that get presented to the public are required a minimum 30 days or a minimum 45 days. And so, when you string those all together, they create a bulk of time. But also, we want to make sure there's sufficient time between each public involvement activity to consider all the feedback. So, for example, we just started this in September. We're having our first advisory group meeting this Thursday, and we want to make sure that when we get feedback from the advisory group, they have a chance to go talk to their constituents, who they represent, give us comments, so that we're addressing those before we go to our next meeting. We don't want to rush through this process. And so, realistically, just stringing those minimum times together, you're looking at at least a year to two years, but we acknowledge that, given the amount of public involvement that's transpired in the past with the city of Lawrence and Douglas County, that we needed a lot more time. Now, if it finishes sooner, great, but realistically, I don't think that would be the case, and we're allotting more time to make sure that we provide plenty of time for public comment.
Thank you. How far out is this realistically before it starts getting built?
Well, the big question is funding. There is no funding right now for this. We have funding to do design activities, and I did mention the task force. That's part of their goal. So, obviously, I know city staff's involved. There will be a meeting in Johnson County on November 8th as part of the task force. So, funding is a big question, but additionally, because we need to go through this process, we still haven't completed design, even to a halfway point on the west, well, what I call the south portion from Sixth Street to US-59, and we do not have any solutions at the north junction. So, until those are complete, that kicks us out even farther.
Okay.
I wouldn't commit to a year because I would probably be wrong.
Thank you.
On your public engagement activities in the schedule, I appreciate that that's outlined relatively clearly, and I know that you don't have dates necessarily specifically lined up for a lot of these. However, are these the number that you definitely intend to have?
Yeah, so at a minimum, we have four public meetings that we will have. We've even talked recently about a fifth. There will be four advisory group meetings. There'll be tons of meetings per request. We will be presenting to the city, excuse me, the county commission on the 24th, so at intervals, we'll be coming back to this body to present. We're really flexible in that nature, that if more meetings are needed based on how the process transpires, we'll add to it. I think the only thing you can see here is we commit to certain quarters to keep it quote-unquote "on schedule," but we are flexible with this. We acknowledge that this may not be the final solution, that more may be needed.
And so, then, on the stakeholder meetings and the community presentations, is there a process outlined for requesting those meetings or determining as they're needed?
So, as I mentioned, there's the email address. If you just email, if anybody wants to email this, I've been giving presentations for over a year on this, email it. It comes to Robin, Lori, and myself, and simply, we reach back out within a couple days and work out when would be best. I know, I think we have another presentation November 1st to the...
Fourteenth with the Chamber.
The 14th with the Chamber of Conference, so that's another example of a meeting that's already been scheduled at their request.
Thank you.
The Lawrence Chamber?
Any other questions for Aaron? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Public comment on this item? Okay, back to the commission.
I'm concerned about the representation on the task force.
I did notice that they have in their schedule to have, just going back to it, elected official coordination. I think that's what that reads. And there's, looks like there's four scheduled. So, I'm assuming that would be like an update, I would assume, what that would mean.
Do you feel that that's enough representation?
Won't know until it happens. I mean, it's hard to know what will be enough. I know that I was, I attended several of those meetings they had, and the big one they had out of the church a couple of years ago, and it was, there was a large interest by several hundred people.
I would imagine so.
Yeah, there was.
I suppose that's why I'm concerned about representation.
So, is it something you want to do?
If you want me to.
If this is three years in the future, though, what concerns me then is the next election in a year and a half might have to change gears.
I guess I'd like to kind of understand better your concern about the representation. What I'm picking up is that they're reaching out to community members because they're trying to go, you know, directly to the community, and that's an interesting way to do it. And they're the ones that get to pick who's on this, so. I don't know. So, are you concerned that members of the public won't represent the same standard that we do?
It's more that it seems odd to me that there's a La Compton city council person and then the person that's a candidate for a seat, but no actual elected commissioners from the city or the county. That strikes me as extremely odd.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Of Aaron. The city of La Compton representative, was that a specific position? That it needed to be a city council member, or was it just happened they...
So, the feedback we got in 2016 was that city of La Compton was underrepresented. Jeff County was underrepresented. Perry should be included. That we hadn't captured that group of people, and so, we were just suggested, why don't you react to this, reach out to the city council. I would offer up this to you, Leslie, that if you would like to see a list of who's being included, we would more than be willing to share it. Again, the idea is we're trying to target more non-technical community members to get their feedback, because I agree with Lisa, we will present on a regular interval, no matter what we share. We just want to make sure we capture the public voice, you know, the non-vocal minority about their concerns with what's being proposed, because it was contentious in 2016. We want to make sure that we get all that feedback. And so, the hope with the advisory group is that we have a broader input. We also have an individual from the KU faculty. Like I said, we have two coming from Haskell Indian Nations. We're trying to get a wide range of individuals and hear that public voice, more so than with the city and county staff that we have. You know, they also could be a conduit for what you have to share as well.
Yeah, that seems right.
I guess what I'm hearing is that the person who's on the La Compton Council is really representing a much wider area and group than just La Compton.
Correct.
It seems to me that with our representation by our city staff, from the technical standpoint, that would be important and could be, like you said, a conduit. And I think, to me, at this phase, I think that's, for me, it's enough at this phase.
There's also economic development concerns with the Farmer's Turnpike as well, especially if they're still talking about moving the interchange to I-70. That would have a big impact. So, if you feel that staff could engage, represent, which isn't really their duty to represent citizens, I guess it's what I'm not seeing as, to me, it seems obvious that elected officials are elected to be representatives of the community, and you especially have a county commissioner that that is her district, especially of that area. So, that particularly strikes me as odd. When it comes to city commission, as I mentioned, economic development is a big deal for us for that interchange. So, if you feel that that's not important enough for us to have a task force member, I'm only one person.
Yeah, I think I agree with the Vice Mayor. I think, you know, we can use staff as a conduit. We can ask them to help us out with that. We'll be getting the regular presentations. And, you know, none of us are shy. We can always call Aaron up and say, hey.
Correct.
Yeah, I think with this, with staff we have, I mean, they're keyed into what our economic development issues are. I would have full faith in them, you know, seeing this part of it through. It's still got a huge process to go through beyond this, and I think there could be input down the road.
And that's actually where, on that note, I want to kind of interject. My main concern is the huge process down the road. I would like to see us make the decisions necessary to speed this up as much as possible. Now, I understand when you're talking about a multi-hundred-million-dollar project, speeding something up with a budget that doesn't have any coins in it is all relevant. But, I mean, the reality is with Mercado Development beginning to take off, you know, we've now got Lawrence Memorial Hospital doing a development out there. As you talk about potential development all along the 10 corridor, you know, we've had, we've had potential development come before us years ago. So, it's not like this is down the road. This is already old news in a lot of ways. We've had, you have a major state highway here that's operating on two lanes insufficiently today. And so, as we talk about five years down the road, having a build-out, that to me is a huge problem. Now, there's nothing we can do to break ground tomorrow, but anything we can do to not push this back six extra months on top of five years is going to be where my priorities at. And so, while I certainly welcome public input, if we're having 500 meetings and that's dragging us out years upon years upon years... us out years upon years upon years, I think we're making a big mistake when we have an insufficient state highway today.
Are the advisory group meetings open to the public?
They are.
Okay.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have been tasked with receiving the presentation. If there's other business that we would like to do in addition to that?
It sounds like I'm the only one that feels that there should be a commissioner representative, so.
Okay. So I guess we would receive the presentation and...
Sharon, you need a formal motion to receive?
I think it's a good idea.
I would move that we receive the presentation from K.
A second.
Your motion with Commissioner Herbert, second from Vice Mayor Larson. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all very much. Our next item is to receive a presentation regarding Safe Bar.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. I'm Assistant City Attorney Maria Garcia. And the purpose of tonight's meeting is to provide you some background information and provide some public comment on the issue of Safe Bar training. I wanted to give you a roadmap of what this presentation will look like because it has a few components to it. I'll begin with some background about why we're talking about this topic, when it started, when it was first raised, the steps that staff has taken since that direction was provided to staff, some preliminary ideas for an ordinance if it is the commission's direction for an ordinance to create such training, be implemented, and then some next steps. After my presentation, we'll have Captain Casey Cooper from the Lawrence Police Department present some data that the police department has gathered in response to some questions from stakeholders or licensees in Lawrence. And then finally, the care center is here. That is, the care center established the Safe Bar training several years ago. And so we have representatives here tonight to give you some more information about what that program is and what training would look like if it were required. So the reason that we're here discussing this issue tonight is because it was first raised in February of this year by Commissioner Inonda. At the end of a meeting, she asked whether it would be possible to require businesses who apply for a liquor license in the city to undergo Safe Bar training. As you know, from the city manager's reports that were, you were updated with a few times, Safe Bar training, just very briefly, I'll let the care center explain what it is. But that is training that is focused on crimes of sexual violence that occur where alcohol is served, specifically in bars. And so staff reported back to the commission in April that we were looking into the question. Then we reported again in August of this year that we determined that it would be possible to require such training as opposed to just making it voluntary in Lawrence. And so it was the desire of the commission to bring this back as a regular agenda item to have some discussion. Initially, we had it on as an ordinance that the commission would just go ahead and vote on. But as we were drafting it and as we received feedback from licensees in Lawrence, we thought that an initial discussion might be a better idea, a bit more productive. I do want to show you two provisions from the city code where if this is going to be made a requirement it would fit into. And in providing you this information, I wanted to acknowledge a request that was made in some correspondence to the city commission about how we refer to this. Somebody had brought up that it shouldn't be referred to as a liquor license or a license because, as the person stated in correspondence, only the state can do that. And I wanted to let you know and I wanted to acknowledge that comment. It's something that I've been looking into. I did contact the League of Kansas Municipalities. Council there thought that as long as we don't call it a liquor license in the code and just a license, that would be acceptable. And that's exactly what we do currently in the city code. It's just referred to as a license. We use the term liquor license just for clarity, so people know what it, we're referring to. But the city code does refer to it as a license. So 4-106 is kind of the enabling language that says a person needs a license in Lawrence before they can sell or serve any alcoholic liquor on any premise. 4-108 lists the qualifications for licensure in Lawrence. And this is where we would insert the language about Safe Bar if it is the commission's desire to vote on an ordinance that would require it. So currently, 4-108 has three requirements of an applicant currently. And so we would fit in a subsection D, again, upon a vote. We do have an example in Kansas from Wichita. That is one city in the state that specifically mentions Safe Bar training in its ordinance and for licensees. That training was implemented as a requirement in 2009, so it has been some time on the books there in Wichita. It's a four-hour class as set out by the ordinance. The state alcohol beverage control provides that training in conjunction with Wichita's fire department and the Wichita Police Department. Some topics that they discuss are city code provisions, fire code, and various state laws. I did talk to the ABC agent that helps provide that training and, oh, I'm sorry, a detective in the Wichita Police Department that helps provide that training. And they reported that sexual assault is not a large topic that's discussed at that Safe Bar training. It is a small piece of it. It is covered. They want to let licensees know the difference between a regular battery and a sexual battery. And there is some discussion about over-serving and crimes of sexual assault that can result from that. I did note in my agenda memo that it's called Safe Bar in Wichita, but it's actually not put on by the care center, which is who created the Safe Bar training that I think Commissioner Inonda was referring to. It is just done in conjunction with the fire department and police department, like I said, with ABC. They do require that as a condition of licensure, though. So since we received that direction in August, staff met with members of the care center to discuss how such a training would look if it were implemented in Lawrence. And we determined that it would last approximately two hours to two and a half hours. The care center would be willing to put on that training monthly or as often as needed to accommodate as many schedules as possible, depending on how many people would be required to participate in this training. After that care center meeting, we sent 165 letters out to on-premise drinking, on-premise establishments in Lawrence that serve alcohol. And we invited them to some meetings that staff hosted, just to get some feedback on their thoughts on the Safe Bar training. Out of those invitations that were made, about eight people came to the meetings. They did provide some very informative and really helpful feedback. Some of the overarching themes, things that those two meetings had in common were, number one, they asked for some data about what the problem actually is and whether there is an issue regarding sexual violence at the bars and related to alcohol. They requested to delay the vote on an ordinance, which, as you know, from the direction tonight, we're just discussing the matter. We're not voting on an ordinance. And then third, they, a common theme was that if Safe Bar training is a desire of the commission, that it not actually be a requirement, but rather just voluntary, that those participants can come on a voluntary basis. So the compliance training was something that we also looked at. It's an annual compliance training that is helped and put on by ABC, the state ABC agency as well. It's provided annually in August. It is hosted at the Lawrence Art Center. That's the venue that they host these trainings at. The Lawrence Police Department has a part in that by helping schedule the trainings and coordinating the participants. I did speak with the ABC agent who helps put on this training. And she reported that topics include the safety and codes compliance for the fire department. City prosecutor sometimes provides information on applicable criminal laws. And then ABC provides the bulk of the rest of the training, and that includes state liquor laws, ABC regulations, information about Kansas driver's license, and detection of fake IDs. But currently, there is no training that's dedicated to sexual violence in those establishments. The attendance for that voluntary compliance training is listed here. In this year, they just held that training. Forty-nine people attended. Forty people attended last year. The training was not held in 2016. And then in 2015, 115 people attended. And we cannot identify that, why there was such a drop in attendance between 2015 and current. It would just be mere speculation, but we don't have data or a reason that we can identify why fewer people attended. So the next steps, after you hear the presentation and receive input from the public, if it is still your desire to move forward with an ordinance like this, we would just ask for some clarification on what the ordinance would look like. Specifically, we would ask who the commission has in mind to attend this training. Would it apply to all licensees? Would it apply to onsite managers? Anybody that serves alcohol? Any employee of that business? How often should the training be required? Are you thinking just initial licensure, or would it be upon renewal every two years? How will the cost of the training be handled? The care center did submit a budget, which they, representatives are here tonight to answer questions about that. What is the effective date of the ordinance? I know that the care center would ask for some additional time to get set up with this, to establish the training, find venues, get their educational resources out. And then two other matters. Number one, the care center provides this training currently and has for the past few years. And there has been some voluntary participation from bars and other establishments and businesses, restaurants around town. A number of them have participated. So another question is whether there should be an exception in the ordinance that states if you have participated in the voluntary training within the X amount of months or year, then you can apply that training to the effective, after the effective date of the ordinance. And then finally, should there be any other exception for temporary liquor licenses, where there's an event hosted just on a temporary basis, maybe it's just for a day? This year, there were 13 applicants so far for a temporary liquor license. So that helps in your consideration. But those are questions that we would just request guidance on. I'll stand for questions if there are any. Otherwise, I'll hand it over to Captain Cooper.
Questions from Maria.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, commissioners. I'm Casey Cooper. I'm a captain on Patrol Division. So I was asked to pull some crime stats for sex crimes that occurred at bars here in the city of Lawrence. And what we did is we looked at the crime stats for 2015, 16, and 17. And for the year 15, we had three sex crimes that were reported to the Lawrence Police Department. In 16 and 17, we had two sex crimes for each of those years as well. Those were the stats that we were asked to get for this. And I didn't know if you had any other questions or anything else.
So these are directly rated to bar issues?
Yes.
My name is Kelsey Hunter. I'm the prevention specialist at the Sexual Trauma and Abuse Care Center. Safe Bar Alliance is a program that we developed at our agency. I'm just going to take a moment to bring up a brief presentation to let you know more about our program. So while this loads, Safe Bar Alliance is a program that was started back in 2011 at the Sexual Trauma and Abuse Care Center. It was started in response to requests that our agency was getting from bars, asking for guidance, for support for their staff in how to handle sexual harassment and sexual violence when they saw that happening at their establishments. And in 2016, we had kind of a relaunch of our program. And so since that time, I'll be talking about what the program has looked like since our relaunch in 2016. So this is a program that right now is by request. And so this is what it might look like. We go actually into bars and drinking establishments and train their staff and managers. And we have a curriculum that we follow. This program was developed in-house, but it's based on a number of evidence-based programs. It's based on a bystander intervention model, which is a model that has been researched by, has been researched by the CDC. And that there's evidence showing that this is an effective way of preventing sexual violence from occurring. So essentially, going through, we talk about consent. And specifically, we talk about what consent looks like in a bar environment. This helps for bar staff to identify what sexual harassment might look like so that they are able to intervene. We talk about some myths and facts around sexual violence, again, helping to make it more likely that staff are able to identify the problem and intervene effectively. And then we'll talk specifically about what some of those signs and signals might be that harassment is happening, recognizing that sometimes that's really clear, and sometimes it can be difficult to recognize those things. And then we'll talk about actual intervention techniques. This is often focusing on de-escalation. And so giving staff tools on how to work with one another and to de-escalate situations to keep patrons safe and to keep staff safe as well. As well as developing protocols and policies within that organization, making sure that everyone is clear about what those protocols and policies are, and identifying if there are places where they would like to make adjustments or strengthen those policies. And then finally, we talk about connecting with the care center. So this is a program that is operated out of the care center. We are the sexual assault support center that serves Lawrence and all of Douglas County. And so making sure that staff know that they can refer patrons to us and that we are a resource to them. And also, letting them know what some of the other responses in our community might be, whether that is to the hospital or reporting to police. So the feedback that we've gotten from the bar staff and the managers who've been through this training is that the training and the discussions that happened during that time are really relevant to what they see day-to-day in a bar environment. So we've had 16 bars trained since that relaunch. And we have assessed, we've asked for feedback, both written feedback and also we've asked if they learned something new beyond the current training that they're receiving. And we checked this, 99% of staff have reported that they learned useful new information from the training. So we know that bar staff themselves find it useful. We've also had opportunities for staff from different establishments to meet and share techniques that they've developed in-house for problems that they're seeing and how that they're able to resolve those. And we've heard that that has been helpful in them building those strategies. And then here's some feedback we got. Our staff did a great job of clarifying the actions we will take in these scenarios. The most helpful thing was just getting everyone on the same page. Great stuff, applicable to bar culture. It gave more confidence to my staff to intervene. This is by far the most common thing that I hear from owners and managers. Even if they saw that their staff was doing a positive job already, they tell us that after training that their staff intervene quicker and more confidently. They're more likely to intervene when they see harassment occurring. Someone saying that it was important for them. In the past, we've had what we call swag available to bars. And this has been limited of late because of our agency's funding. This is really helpful in letting patrons know that they're in a bar that's received this training. Because we know that even if staff are really well-trained, patrons may not know that. And sometimes people have had negative experiences reaching out to bar staff for support. So it's communicating to the community that staff want people to come forward. A way that we are still doing that is through these posters that say "The bartender is your friend." And so we ask our members to display these prominently, and in around restrooms and in around the bar itself. So you can see it right there outside Red Lion. So that's all I have. Does anyone have questions about the content of the program?
Questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I do have a question. Could you kind of give me a little bit more explanation about what, who the care center is? Are they a nonprofit?
Yes, we are a nonprofit. We are a rape crisis... We are a rape crisis center that was started by KU students in 1972. We've had a few names. We started as RVSS, and then we were Godogee Safe Center. And then in 2016, we became The Care Center. We provide 24/7 advocacy. We have a support line, as well as advocates who provide medical advocacy and court advocacy. We have individual and group therapy available for people of all ages and genders. And we have an education team that provide education in the schools. We're in all of the USD 497 elementary schools, providing body safety training. We're in both high schools in USD 497. And we work with universities in our service area and in the community as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Public comment on this issue?
My name is Dawn Hawkins. I've lived here in Lawrence since 1989. I only learned last night that this issue was on the table. Just happened to see the City Commissioner's agenda. And thank you Commissioner Ananda for bringing this forward, because it's very important. We do have a big problem in Lawrence, Kansas. Women and men of all ages are being drugged in Lawrence, Kansas. On New Year's Eve of this year, my 24-year-old daughter was drugged at a downtown Lawrence bar. You might remember how cold it was that night. The real temperature was negative 11. With wind chills, it was much colder. Had I not had a mother's instinct that something was wrong with my daughter that night, she would have died. My other daughter and I found her at 3:00 AM, several hours after she was last seen at the bar. She suffered severe frostbite to her feet and spent the first week of this year in the KU Med Burn Center's ICU. KU Med saved her feet. My daughter is lucky that she is alive and did not lose her hands and feet. May I show some images? Okay. Thank you. I apologize for the graphic images I'm about to share, but I feel like it's necessary to bring home the reality and the severity of the problem that we have. I can just pass them to the Commissioners if we need to. May I just give them to the Commissioners to pass around? I've given the Commissioners photos of my daughter's burned feet from that night. She lost all of her skin on her feet. Since this has happened to my daughter, we have shared her story mostly by word of mouth. Yet, almost every time we tell the story to someone, we are told about others who have also been drugged here in Lawrence. People tell firsthand stories of being drugged themselves, of their neighbors, their sister, their aunt, their friend. We're hearing these stories over and over. I'm bringing this to your attention now to shed light on how much the Safe Bar training is needed. The bar that my daughter went to to celebrate New Year's Eve is a place where she worked while putting herself through nursing school. She was familiar with the staff and they were familiar with her. The manager himself said that he thought she was acting strange, yet still allowed her to leave before midnight had even struck on New Year's Eve. Had he been more informed and aware of the symptoms of drugging, or even over-intoxication and over-serving, and how best to react, he would likely not have let her leave on her own. Requiring Safe Bar training to obtain and keep liquor licensing is one thing that Lawrence can do to make its citizens, as well as KU students, safer.
Thank you.
Katie Welsh, I would just like to say after the, I'm a friend of the family. I've known these kids so long. I wrote a long letter to the Chief of Police and we got no response. And I think that was just odd. I just wanted to say, thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Costello. I am a member of the Board of Directors for the Safe Bar, or for the Care Center. And I'm also a manager of a venue downtown. And I just want to say, we went through the training a few years back and we went through the training again the year before last. And as a manager, I feel a responsibility to assure that we're doing everything we can to provide a safe environment. I've had patrons and guardians of patrons. I had a parent just call last week to reach out and ask what we're doing, how we're equipped to protect concertgoers from being potentially assaulted at an event. I think the training itself was under two hours. It was easy, engaging, it was incredibly informative. My staff asked questions and we're especially surprised to learn the statistics and reasons why sexual assaults often go unreported, as we continue to realize with the current Me Too and Time's Up movements. But specifically, I just want to say, I think the most valuable part of the program is the training and bystander intervention, which provided my staff with the confidence in order to act, to try and prevent instances of the sexual assault and harassment that we have.
Thank you. Other public comment on this issue? Okay, let's bring it back to the Commission.
I did have a couple of questions for Casey.
Okay.
That came up for me, if you don't mind. On the three that you identified in 2015, the two in 16 and 17, were those sex crimes that occurred in a bar?
They were what was reported to occur at the bar.
Okay. And so would there have been other crimes, had you looked, that occurred where the two people or individuals involved had been at a bar prior to those crimes occurring?
So you're saying like if a sex crime occurred at a residence, if they left the place beforehand?
Correct.
So we can do search by data on narratives and we do have that. But you know, we couldn't narrow down to say that maybe they frequented other bars besides just one that night. And I do have that data, if you're wanting that as well. And that was just what was pulled from, from the narratives of those, of other crimes. Just saying, sex crimes were the bars were listed in the narrative, not necessarily saying that it was tied to one or the other. And in 15, we had seven. And 16, we had 25. And 17, we had 10. But again, I was just saying that they had been at a bar prior to any kind of sex crime being alleged.
Do we have data? And I know it's impossible to know exactly, but the percentage approximately of sex crimes that are actually reported?
To bars, or just in general?
In general. To law enforcement specifically?
Yeah, so that could be a skewed number, because you've got to take into consideration that there's anonymous reporting at LMH that necessarily law enforcement would never know about unless the victim changes their mind. And also, there's KUPD, that, you know, we don't track their numbers as well. So I do have that information for sex crimes that were reported. In 2015, there was 135. 2016, there was 136. And 2017, there was 134.
Thank you. So, thank you for saying that.
Okay.
For me, I think that, you know, when we're talking about those tiny numbers, we saw how those grew as we looked at what the real circumstances are for folks. Those are, those are things that we know about. I know in my work at KU, we receive reports that law enforcement have never seen and will never see. A majority, I would say, of those involve a bar. I'm sure that the care center's disaggregated data would show the same. That those go to LMH and sometimes never go to the Police Department, that they go to KUPSO. And then we know a majority, many, don't even report it to anybody else. And so I think that, I just, I want to be clear that asking for the data and the information, I think to the question that we have to ask is how many is too many?
I can't figure out if Commissioner Larson is going to say something or not.
I think, I just, it's an excellent point. One's too many, obviously. But does that warrant developing an ordinance? That's what we're here to discuss, I think. One is too many. I did have a question from Maria. Is she still here? The eight people that attended the meetings that you had from the 165 invitations that you sent out, did they, did they indicate at all what, how they felt about an actual ordinance being brought forth?
So for purposes of tonight, I let everybody know that this would be on for discussion for tonight. In those letters, they asked for a delay on an actual vote for an ordinance. They wanted for the Commission to talk about it more and for there to be an opportunity for those licensees to discuss it among themselves and provide feedback to the Commission. And then they said that if there were an actual ordinance, they would ask for it to just be encouraged or made on a voluntary basis, that it not be an actual requirement. But I'm just conveying the thoughts that were among that, that small group of people.
I think I'd welcome a discussion as to whether it should be voluntary or not, or an actual ordinance. I don't know which would be best.
Did they provide information about their experience with these issues and the training that they provide?
So they were all, the majority that I remember were familiar with the annual compliance training, which again, doesn't necessarily focus on sexual assault, but anecdotal, just their comments at the meetings. They did not think that there was an issue in their places of business, which is why they asked for data from the Police Department. They wanted to identify whether there was in fact a problem that would warrant a requirement.
Maria, while you're up there, last week, we had talked about the Tobacco 21 and the issue of whether or not the city had the ability to even take action came up. It would seem to me, and I'd ask for your legal opinion here, but it would seem to me that the case study of Wichita, being almost a decade old now, indicates that in communities that have done this, there has not been legal action taken?
I did speak with someone from their city attorney's office and she told me that there have not been challenges to their Safe Bar ordinance since it was adopted. That's correct.
So the training that would occur, is that something that would cost the establishments to take that training?
At our meetings with the licensees, they did say that it would have some cost to them. I'm not sure if anybody's here from, any of the licensees to speak to it, but they did mention a cost of paying their employees to attend the training because they're not working at the establishment, but they're still on duty. That was one comment that was raised.
Well, I did go through and look at the questions that you asked us to give information on, so I thought I would share kind of my thoughts on those questions. The requirement, I think that, you know, I hear the concerns. I do think that it should be required for the licensees and managers, in my opinion. And then if a bar wants to be certified to have their staff, obviously, there's turnover. And so that would have to be a conversation. On the second question, required for new licensees only or renewal every two years, I think that they can maintain their certification if they've had it within the last two years. And then each two years, all staff should be trained. And that would allow like a quarterly training rather than a monthly, which might become onerous for the care center, of course, as well as, you know, just keeping up attendance and expectations as far as getting new staff in there. The cost, in my opinion, would best be benefited in the license fee from the city. And then within, at six months of the time that the care center is prepared to step in and do that, would be my recommendation, I guess, regarding the effective date. Obviously, there's a public process for this to go through. The care center needs to prepare their materials and make sure that they can effectively find in a venue and consider a timeline for doing that. That's a big commitment, I think. If we're going to require it by ordinance, that's something that we definitely need. And I know the nature of nonprofit organizations depends heavily on grant funding and those resources. We also provide funding through the city for some nonprofit organizations. And I think that's something that we could consider as well. Let's see. Should the ordinances allow licensees to present that training received prior? Yes, within the last two years. The 16 bars that have already undergone this, I think that's phenomenal. And then should it exclude the training requirement for a temporary liquor license? I think that it should, in my opinion. I think that that's a reasonable request. For the number that we got, a lot of times, these are through existing establishments anyway. And so that would probably bring in several of those. So that's what I had listed as kind of my questions, or my answers to those questions. And it really is because I know that many alcohol facilitated sexual assaults start at bars. And that prevention piece is what we want to see, because we know that intervention isn't as effective as we'd like. And even when justice is served, as we see it through a, whether through an academic system or a justice system, it doesn't fix that person and it doesn't change what happened to them. So preventing that is really where we get to the core of changing our culture, changing our community, and shifting that paradigm in our community. I think that when I've done trainings, I ask, I have asked, how many men in the room know a woman who've experienced sexual assault? And I've seen that number rise as I've asked that question. But when I ask women that question, undoubtedly, very rarely does someone not raise their hand having known someone or experienced sexual harassment or sexual assault. And I think that that would apply evenly in drinking establishments as well. So that's why I brought this up in the first place. That's why it's important to me. That's why, you know, I think taking into consideration what the bars are asking for in regard to requiring it happening, I hear that. I think that we can celebrate those bars that do go the extra step to have their staff trained as Safe Bar trainees. But I think that it's essential that we get our licensees and managers, at the very least, to experience that, two hours of their life, changing someone's life dramatically.
Well, I appreciate your technical experience with these kind of matters, because I didn't even know something like this existed. So it's good to see that it's brought forward. To me, it just seems like it should be a basic public safety kind of measure that we require with people. I don't really see how continuing education, how prevention of sexual assault could really be the onerous to bars. I mean, unfortunately, liquor is something that goes along with sexual assault. Not always, but sometimes. So I think it's important to be proactive about that. And I think it really speaks well for the 16 bars that have gone through the training already, that they have done that. So of course, the devil is in the details. But I feel like that, you know, when I ask myself, what can I do to prevent sexual assault? It's like, hey, here's a big thing we can do, you know? So I think we should require it.
I think a couple more questions that I would have is if we move forward with this, with the training that's required, would the care center be the only entity that could provide that training? Are they certified at some state or national level to do this type of training?
Hi Commissioners, my name is Chrissy Heickel and I'm the Executive Director of the
My name is Chrissy Heikel, and I'm the Executive Director of the Sexual Trauma and Abuse Care Center. So, yes, so first of all, the, we are, Safe Bar Alliance is our program. We started in 2010. We've trained, how many, 16 different communities throughout the nation to do this program and utilize a lot of research-based stuff? So, as far as the program, I mean, this is a hometown project that we've been building for, for 10 years now. And as far as our agency and accreditation around it, we go through a statewide accreditation through the Kansas Coalition of Sexual and Domestic Violence Coalition. They come in, we do a self-study every year, as well as a, a full accreditation, I think, every three years. We have that current certification. We follow audits in 990s and have accountability around our financials and everything like that. I mean, I'm not sure what other questions you would have about.
Is there anyone who provides the same sort of training, like an equivalent product, that we could just say, you have to have this product, not necessarily Safe Bar Training with the care center?
Locally, in our community, or what are you?
Just anybody, I mean?
I mean, there's other communities that are implementing the Safe Bar Alliance locally, throughout Kansas. I think Emporia utilizes the program. There's one out in Salina, I think. I mean, there's multiple communities that have been trained on it. As far as putting it into an ordinance and require, having as a requirement, the only similar one is the Wichita one, which is not the Safe Bar Alliance program. It just has a similar name with a similar goal.
I guess what I'm asking is, is there any national training that a bar could say, we'd like to choose a different, you know, format, you know?
Not that I know of.
Not that you know of, okay.
Yeah.
Then I guess my follow-up question to you would be, if, if we enacted this tomorrow, which obviously we're not, but hypothetically, we enact this tomorrow, do you have the capacity to actually serve an entire community of, of bar staff? Whatever that looks like, whether it be just management or, or whatever the, you know, do you have that capacity now?
We have the staff for it. Not necessarily the, the, the program itself is not connected to a grant or has any kind of consistent funding. It just comes through individual contributions and donations that fund that program. So, as far as consistent funding for the program, we would absolutely need to, to have some consistency with that. But as far as staffing and expertise around the program, we're at capacity right now for that.
So, speaking of funding, the, the budget that you submitted?
Yes.
What does that cover? Is it one-time training, or is it ongoing training? Is it for a year? Is it for a quarter?
It's a, it's a year budget for the program.
And so that, again, what would it include, sending out flyers, or?
Do you have the budget?
Yeah, I've got it in front of us, yeah.
Okay. All right, I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, it's $17,800.
Yeah, and with the, okay. So, personnel, obviously, that's for the staff person that would be providing the training, which is Kelsey currently. As far, and supplies, as far as the printing publications, that's the posters, that's the materials at the, the trainings. Supplies would include some of the, the swag and just the stuff around that. Training, education costs, I'm not sure about location of space and how we would do that training. That's some of the logistics we'd have to figure out as far as size of the group, groups, and how often we do those and things like that. But I went ahead and put in some, some of those costs for anything for that, not very much. Like I said, I don't even know exactly. Maybe Lawrence Art Center would work for that with the, the current training that bars go to. And then victim outreach would just be make sure we have materials available for bars and for, to connecting to survivors, because this program absolutely brings forward so much more education and outreach to folks that have experienced sexual violence in our community. I wanted to make sure that it was covering that outreach.
So, how many people would this budget cover? Training for how many people?
Well, this is looking at the once-a-month training schedule that we had talked about. And like I said, that's, as far as the details of that, it's not figured out as far as how big, how we would group the establishments together, because we're looking at caterers versus very large venues, the experience that they're having are very different. So, some of that logistics, but that, the budget is looking at a once-a-month training within that.
I was trying to, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, just other questions.
I was trying to dig up, we have that special fund for liquor tax. Do you happen to have, do you happen to have memorized what page that is on?
Yeah, you're on mine.
Yeah, I'm on it right now.
One, one, thank you.
I have a feeling.
So good.
I was curious if we, if in the future, this, I guess, let me rephrase my question. Is this something that we can fund through that special fund?
Commissioner, I think that there's very specific language that talks about what those liquor dollars can be used for, but law enforcement is one, education is one, intervention is one, prevention is one. So, I think it, I think it might.
Sounds like it ticks off all of us.
Yeah. And, Commissioner, that, we have had funding through that fund for Safe Bar Alliance for about three years, six years ago. And it was, our application was dropped one year for it, and so we, we lost funding.
Oh, you used to have it through the city and now you don't?
Yes, through that, the special alcohol fund. It wasn't very much. It was like 2,000.
Yeah, that's the number that was in my head.
It was a very small amount.
I don't think that represented the whole budget. I don't know if it did or not.
No, it absolutely did not. It took care of some supplies and materials.
So, would the bars be charged a fee to take this course or do this training?
Not through us. I mean, all of our services are completely free of charge to the community, so we do not do any kind of service building.
I think that was one of the items that maybe Maria was interested in getting direction on, Vice Mayor. I think you could do it either way. I mean, I think the alcohol fund would be an option where the city could say, if we're going to require this program, then we'll subsidize the cost of it and fund it that way. Or it could be a part of the fee that the licensees pay.
Yeah, I don't want it to be funded in the way that it was before, where it can be dropped like that. I don't, I don't want to recreate that scenario.
Yeah, I guess my preference would be if we're going to require this, that, you know, we use some of the alcohol fund money to, to pay for it. I don't really want the license fees to go up for the bars because we're doing this.
Yeah. How much, do you happen to remember the amount we get, or we got last year in that fund? Yeah, let me look, hold on. Let me scroll back down to page 121.
Again, logistically, a lot of the cost of this is going to be tied up in who it is that we're mandating to take it.
Right.
Because you, I mean, you have, you have a huge difference here in, in potential numbers. If we take it to just the actual applicant, the licensee, the licensee, or if you talk about management within said bar, or if you talk about all bartenders, you know, obviously as, as, as the number grows, your cost is going to grow, your number of sessions is going to have to grow. But at the same time, as you, as you mandate that this be a smaller group, if you only have it be the individual licensee, the applicant for the license, the question becomes, to what degree is that knowledge and information actually going to trickle down to staff? I mean, at what level are we willing to micromanage? You know, okay, we know that the applicant for the Red Lion had the training, but can we sit there and micromanage that they have an actual staff meeting where, as part of that? And it gets to be a little bit not feasible for us to actually manage.
And there's such high, there's turnover with staff?
Correct.
How do you, how do you deal with that?
So, I think we, you know, we have to be real careful. There's a balance here between requiring that every person that works in a bar take it, also being able to fund that, versus having so few people take it that it has no real impact, and we end up just spending dollars on something without an actual impact.
I think that's why I proposed, you know, just the licensees and managers, but then if they want to be, if they want to have the sign on their door to have their staff rolling, being trained in that.
So, how do you, how do you enforce that, though? How do you enforce the staff training piece of that?
I think that you have to show that any staff that's been there for X amount of time, the next time that you renew your license in two years, has experienced that training.
Through the Sexual Trauma and Abuse Care Center?
Could be through them. It could be them showing their certification through the certificate that you get when you experience that training. I think that there are a multitude of ways. It wouldn't be overly onerous for an owner to.
I guess what, what I'm really asking is, am I able to, as the applicant, just self-train my, my staff?
Well, Sora had mentioned, you know, are there other trainings that you can attend? And I acknowledge that, Kelsey mentioned that this training is based on other prevention trainings, or bystander intervention trainings. And so, there could be, I, I'm open to discussion around other bystander intervention trainings. It's not going to be free, but I think that that can be an option, in my opinion.
Well, is your goal that the, the people who are doing the day-to-day work in the bars be trained in this and able to intervene?
Ideally.
Is your goal that the licensee will have that training?
Well, my goal is that sexual assault doesn't occur, but yes. That, I, I think that that's going to be the most effective intervention, just like when, you know, the mandate for doctors to ask whether or not intimate partner violence was happening, they would say, so you're not experiencing intimate partner violence, right? Because they didn't know what to do when they got a yes. They didn't want the yes. We're teaching them what to, what to do when they get the yes.
I don't know if this is something that we can have staff perhaps spend more time on with the care center and bar owners, trying to start banging out some of these, that's a terrible phrase to use, start getting these details.
I think that's an excellent idea, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I really think that the fundamental question this is going to come down to is if individual bar staff is required to do the training through the care center, or if it can be done by management that has received the training through the care center, because that one question is probably a $20,000 question. You know, I mean, that's, that's going to be, that's going to decide what this program really costs.
But I'm, I'm hearing the care center say that it doesn't cost them anything, they don't charge to do it.
Correct.
Staff time.
But, but them not charging to do it doesn't mean it doesn't have a cost. I mean, I also heard the care center say they no longer have keychains because they don't have the budget for it. So, I find it hard to believe that if they don't have the budget for keychains, that they will have the budget to train 1,000 bar workers. And so, I mean, ultimately, that, that's going to bear a cost, and, and we need to know going in, what our mandate's going to be so that we can actually know what that cost is.
And that would be part of the conversation staff would have with the care center as well as the bar owners. That seems reasonable.
Yeah, we would need better numbers.
Yeah.
But ideally, I would like to see it go down to the day-to-day staff as well.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to go back to number six on the questions.
Temporary.
On the temporary liquor license. You know, I think you mentioned, Commissioner Ananda, that we might be duplicating with organizations that already have the Safe Bar. My concern would be where there's no duplication. And, and I think we ought to really think about, when we're doing a temporary license, do we want to have this as part of that conversation?
I know that we have caterers licenses, so perhaps that's something that they would be more of the annual trainees.
I'm not against it.
Okay. So, I think what I'm hearing appears that we appreciate the conversation, we want it to continue, we want to make progress on this issue. We want to, we want to bring people in and, and just say, let's keep the conversation going and, and keep working towards, you know, a result that will be good for our community.
Yeah.
So, do we need to take an action at this point, or just have we?
Mayor, putting that in direction and motion along with any other specifics that you have for us would be helpful.
Okay. Somebody want to help me with the, with the motion?
Well, we could move that we have staff in the care center and potential trainees work together to come up with details with a, with a goal of going to perhaps required training for licenses.
Okay, that's a motion.
I don't know if I said that in the right way for you.
Sherry, that work for you?
I would, I mean, I can put that down as the motion, but I'm not sure that really gives us direction on.
Well, I mean, we're asking staff, we're asking staff to work with the care center and the potential trainees to continue the conversation, get more data for us to consider, you know, more information and, you know, a more robust, I don't know how to say it.
Discussion on the, on the questions that were posed in the memo, perhaps.
Do you have any sense of, of any of those questions that were asked?
Can we step back one second? I really think that, that we're at a place where I'm not sure the five of us are having the same conversation right now. I mean, we're all generally talking about this training, but what, what I would prefer to see is similar to how it was done with the massage.
Body.
Exactly, yeah. I, I can't have this conversation until I have an ordinance in front of me where I have actual details and I understand what my vote does.
That's an ex-
I have no idea right now what my vote does.
That's an excellent example of where the attorney's office, the police, and the bodywork community came together and came up with a great ordinance.
So, my, my motion would be.
Let me resend my motion.
Okay. My, my motion would be that we ask city staff to produce an ordinance and bring it back to the commission. Because until we have that ordinance, what are we debating?
Okay.
But it would be to develop an ordinance that is.
Through the process of the conversations that we've talked about.
That's requiring training?
It's staff recommendation. I would add, I would, I would ask the staff to work with stakeholders to produce an ordinance and bring back to the city commission for debate, public comment, and vote.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Herbert, second, Commissioner Ananda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. And thank you, Matthew. I appreciate that very much. We're going to take a break for about seven minutes. We're going to take a break for about seven minutes. Item number three on our regular agenda, consider authorizing city manager to exit contract with Alta Planning and Design. Amanda?
Good evening, I'm Amanda Sahin, I'm engineer with MSO. So, I'm going to go into a little bit of the history here with these projects. The current item on the agenda is obviously, was just mentioned, and that's the contract with Alta Planning and Design. There is a couple representatives from Alta Planning and Design here tonight, in case there's any questions. First, I just wanted, there's going to be a couple different terms I used through this, bicycle route and bicycle boulevard, and I just wanted to do a very quick kind of overview what those are. So, bicycle route is a shared street with bike route signs, is used to connect additional routes on the network. Typically, it's lower-volume streets, follow the same general corridors, a more heavily-traveled street. Some examples are Harvard, Harper, Trail, Yale, and then 13th Street. Bicycle Boulevard is a shared street that has been optimized for bicycle travel. So, low motorized vehicle volume, lower speeds, and they discourage cut-through traffic, but allow local motor vehicle traffic. Both of these, along with bike lanes, buffered bike lanes, cycle tracks, shared-use paths, all form the comprehensive bicycle network. These projects, 13th and 21st Street, have been bike facilities for a long time. City staff went back and found that they were on the 1999 planned bikeway map as existing bike routes. Can't really, don't really have a history of anything before then, so not sure, it was probably sometime in the 90s they were established as bike routes. Every bike route update since then has included these segments as bike routes. And the current countywide bikeway system plan, which was passed, which was adopted in 2014, was a consultant-led effort by Tool Design Group, and it lists these current bike routes. It also identifies 21st Street to have future bike lanes. In 2016, there was a pedestrian bicycle issues task force, they had a report that made a recommendation to develop a highly-visible network of bicycle boulevards, and both 21st Street and 13th Street were listed as priorities for development on that list. Both of those recent plans, the countywide bike plan and the Ped Bike Issues Task Force had significant public engagement portions as part of the scope. This is just kind of an overview of the plan. You can see, kind of here, that's 21st Street, the segment we're talking about. Let's see, it's a little hard to see, but that's 13th Street from Mass to Burrows Creek. Those are on the priority network, as you see, the priority network's kind of the blue boulder network. Those are the ones that the Ped Bike Issues Task Force recommended to be the priority for funding. There's also an additional component to this. 13th Street's been on the traffic calming list since 2006. February 2006, it went to Traffic Safety Commission, and March 2006, it was heard by city commission. They approved that request and referred the request to 2007 budget consideration process. At that time, there was no funding set aside for this type of project, but the list was starting to be developed and to grow. Turned out, this project has sat on the list unfunded for the next decade or more at this point. In June 2016, Public Works actually recommended this project, received four speed bumps at $32,000, and there was public comment on the item that asked that it be denied, because it didn't deal with the fact that it was a bike route. And the Ped Bike Issues Task Force report had recently been done, and that recommended the bicycle boulevard. So, they asked that more funding needed to be put on this project, and not to do it until it could be done right. So, city commission removed it from the list, and basically, for the lack of funding. So, fast forward to this year. This year, Transportation Commission passed the non-motorized projects prioritization process. It ranks all of those projects on the priority network. So, 21st and 13th Street both ranked highly, using the scoring criteria set in that process. Also, we were doing the 2018 traffic calming project list, and we kind of noticed the correlation between, 13th Street was ranked highly on that also, it was the fourth-ranked project on that. And it also was this bicycle boulevard. So, given where it was at on the list and the projects ahead of it, it turned out there was much more funding this year available than in past years for it. So, we recommended $100,000 go to that project for a bicycle boulevard. And we extended the scope slightly from Mass to Haskell versus just from Connecticut to Haskell, because that is the bike route, that's the priority bike route. That was approved by Transportation Commission in March 2018, recommended for approval. Staff considered this project recommendation to be a benefit to that neighborhood that originally requested the traffic calming, but also a benefit to the community as a whole by working on that bike network and improving it. Then, in April 2018, took a spending plan to Transportation Commission for the bike Ped ADA rent money, and that was, that included the 21st Street Bike Boulevard, as well as Lawrence Avenue from Harvard to Bob Billings, and that was recommended for approval. Then, we got into, kind of over the summer, the city commission actions regarding these items. The 21st Street project has, when that was brought up with Lawrence Avenue, there was comments from the commission that Lawrence Avenue didn't have a lot of support. So, we have since removed that from the scope. That was brought up by some members of the public, and also, at the same time, they talked about the traffic calming list and how they thought 13th Street needed even additional funding to that $100,000. So, the discussion was about whether we could use some of the funds from Lawrence Avenue to fund some more on 21st Street and 13th. And we've since followed up with bond counsel on that. The way that the resolutions are currently written, we can't, but we can do another resolution that would expand that, so that we could use some of the funds from Lawrence Avenue on 13th. We can currently use it on 21st, because they were the same resolution. But, we kind of wanted to get through the conceptual design, to know where we were in cost before we made that recommendation. So, we may bring that back to this commission at some point. We also had, obviously, the whole discussion about the main trafficway ordinance this summer, that was discussed in a couple of different commission meetings, that, the reason for that. And so, that was several of these meetings here. And then, we eventually had the resolutions for the issuance of the bonds for both projects. So, based on all of these actions that unanimously passed in order to approve the 13th Street Bicycle Boulevard, staff had no indication the street was in question for the project. The project list, main traffic ordinance, bond resolution, all specified 13th Street location for the traffic calming-funded bicycle boulevard. And since those are funded by general obligation debt, it required that level of specificity. Just want to touch real quickly on the contract scope. We definitely heard that there was some discussion about the public engagement on these, and so, we wanted to make sure that we had a very significant public engagement, community engagement portion of these contracts, of this contract. So, there's a significant scope in there for community engagement. It involves several items, flyers to the neighborhoods, meeting with businesses and school district, email messaging, contacting neighborhood associations. There'll be one to two, depending on kind of how the process goes. We have enough in there for two meetings per location, for neighborhood meetings, to discuss issues, educate the neighborhood about bicycle boulevards. We also, at the first neighborhood meeting, pop-up demonstration is planned in each location to kind of demonstrate traffic calming applications, educate the public, get some feedback. And then, we'll also have a city website and the Lawrence Listen survey, that way, if people who aren't able to attend, will be able to participate. Also involves fairly heavy conceptual design phase, by identifying opportunities that fit that neighborhood context, and trying to fit that to what the neighborhood has voiced that they want from the projects. Some wayfinding options, it's a big part of bicycle boulevards, is wayfinding. And then, they'll prepare a conceptual design, and they'll present it to Transportation Commission, and they'll come back to this commission and present it also. And then, there's the final design phase, obviously, which is just the final preparation for construction, for the plans. So, I know that there's been, we were informed last week, there was some discussion about this project, and some consideration maybe not doing the 13th Street project. So, that's why we wanted to kind of present the history, and why we are where we're at at this point. And also, but, the action tonight on the agenda is really to approve the contract, to allow the public engagement portion to start. We're really at the start of that right now. There's going to be a lot of talking to the neighborhood and seeing what they really want this to be. You know, the city staff made these recommendations based on current plans that have had a public process and have been vetted through that process. So, and I just wanted to kind of remind everyone, too, the original intent of that 13th Street project was traffic calming. That was really what, I mean, it's traffic calming funds, we're just trying to leverage that into something additional. And we figure it's a win-win if we can also get a bicycle facility that functions better than it currently is. It's a wide street, people are driving very fast, the volumes are actually where they need to be for a bicycle boulevard. The speeds are just high, so we need to do something to address the speeds on that street. And that would be a big part of this project. So, we think really that this can make that a more livable street, but just also make it a nicer facility for the community. So, if commission wants to discuss changing the alignment, there's some factors that we can talk about later that we think should be considered. But, we just wanted to give you the history of that, and that is all I have.
Well, thank you very much, Amanda.
Yeah.
I really appreciate that.
Welcome.
Questions for Amanda?
I actually had some questions about the design proposal. I noticed in here that they, at the very end of it, the assumptions that were made, that they're planning for at least one neighborhood meeting at each location, but there's an option for two. Is there extra charge for that second?
No, that's included in that total. So, it's a not-too-exceed contract, so if we don't use the second meeting, it would not be billed.
So, what's, how do you determine whether a second meeting is needed?
We wanted to include it in the scope, based on, kind of wanted to see the, how it's received. When, really, where we saw that was after the conceptual design, when we're bringing it to Transportation Commission. At that point, potentially having another one, depending on how the neighborhoods reacted and how it's received. If we still got some concern residents in the neighborhood, I think we'll decide to have that. But, we wanted to have it in the scope, or if we're directed to have it, you know, obviously, that's always an option, too. But, we wanted to kind of see how the process goes, and really let them, you know, all take it out there and do what they do best, and get the community engaged, and let the neighborhood tell us what they need back from us, so.
I noticed that one part of it where it stated that they would be giving notices just to the people on each side of that street. Is there going to be any outreach to the neighborhood association beyond that street?
Yeah, so, there's also, I probably breezed by it very fast. There is some things, I know, that talk about the flyers that are mailed, the email messaging, and then the contacting neighborhood associations, businesses, community leaders. We know the school district's going to be a big part of it, especially on 21st Street, the funeral homes as it relates to 13th Street, so.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions for Amanda?
I got one more. This is more techno. One of the final design phase says that there's only going to, they're going to provide us with 90% in final design plans? What does 90% mean?
90% is usually a term, it's kind of your last check before you finalize them. It's, I'm not sure what else we call it. There's different terminology here for it, but a lot of times, that's kind of your pre-final set, but right before it goes to construction documents, just for final review to catch anything.
Okay.
So.
So, they don't provide the construction documents?
Yes.
They do?
That's the final design.
That's the final design, okay.
Those are the construction documents. I know that there's so many different terminology for all those different phases.
Other questions for Amanda? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, public comment?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'd like to make a comment on this part about notifying neighborhood associations. Last summer, there was a debate whether the traffic engineer contacted the North Lawrence Improvement Association, which didn't happen. And so, that created a misunderstanding that we had the money for traffic calming devices on Lincoln Street, and it was around $40,000. And so, that confusion, for lack of contacting the neighborhood association, the city, the taxpayer, picked up the money. taxpayer picked up the money, picked up the debt on those traffic calming devices. And also, when these devices were installed about a month or so ago, at the city's cost, the residents along Lincoln, I started receiving phone calls in the morning and afternoon about residents going home on Lincoln Street, and they did not have any notification that day or prior to that day that construction would start. And I have residents that I have talked to since, and we've had a meeting with the traffic engineer and Lisa Larson and Vice Mayor. And I went back and told the residents that, you know what, I'm really getting tired of being called liars, and so are the residents on Lincoln Street. And this deal of not contacting the neighborhood associations and supposedly contacting people within 200 foot of the project is really getting old. And like I say, it cost the city of Lawrence, we had, I still have the money, matter of fact, I got over $40,000 worth of CDBG money to spend on traffic calming devices. And I'm having a hell of a time getting it spent.
There's some other neighborhoods you might want to be talking to. There's some other neighborhoods you might want to be talking to.
Well, not my, no, I know, just my neighborhood. I don't care about the other neighborhoods. And the DLA has got this money to spend. And hopefully, by 2019, we might be able to get some traffic calming devices on Lion Street. Those people have been waiting for over six years. But anyway, the lack of communication between the city and the neighborhood associations, and I have talked to East Lawrence, Pinckney neighborhood, and they all said the same thing, lack of communication to the neighborhood associations. And you know, when we get this money, CDBG money, well then, you know, that helps the city and the taxpayer and gets something done a lot quicker, so.
Thank you, Ted.
Can we turn off that lamp?
Yeah, it's hurting us.
Other public comment on this issue?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Katie Walsh, I'm speaking only for myself. I am pro-bike, pro-bike routes, pro-traffic calming. I think Jessica's awesome. I think all our bike advocates are awesome. I come in peace. And a lot of East Lawrence people participated in the community-wide bikeway system plan. I'm going to read this, I only have three minutes. "The Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods is preparing a report for our planning department on the pros and cons of dealing with planning. One of the repeatedly troubling items that Ted just addressed is, and this will be in the report, is the seemingly random notifications to the neighborhoods, which are sometimes excellent and other times just nonexistent. This is confusing and doesn't build trust." I want to give you a little history about the East 13th Street. We finally got to sit down with Janet Good, who was our president at the time, Dawn Hawkins, who spoke tonight, and Janet, and one other mom were fierce about getting, making it safer for our kids to get to New York School. And they fought for stop signs, and they fought for push-button traffic controls, and they fought and fought and got no response from the city. It took years and years and years. And that's where this came from. They wanted traffic calming on 13th Street. And then it was fine that it became a proposed bike route. This is a different animal. This is, you know, and it may be great, and 13th Street may be just the right place to put it, but it's morphed. We finally got two push-button crossings, some stop signs, and it's a different world. It was put on the list in 2006, to our knowledge, 12 years ago. It may or may not be the right street. The night that they voted at the Transportation Commission, is that what it's called now? To pull it up from the list and add it, they should have sent an email to East Lawrence and voted on it the next month. Just tell us. You know, all you got to do is tell us. Then, no one's come to the neighborhood at our last meeting, and we've got another board member here. We said, gee, maybe it should be 12th Street. I always use 10th Street with my kids, maybe 14th. No one's come to the neighborhood. It's 2018, it's been 12 years. Come on, man. You know, come to the neighborhood, let's talk about it. This community engagement sounds awesome, but a little of it should have happened before. Thank you.
Katie, I've got a couple of questions for you. Where are your push buttons? Are they on?
They're at 11th and the Burroughs Creek Trail.
So it's not on 13th?
No, and we have one and on 10th Street at the alley by New York School.
Okay. And what stop signs did you get?
You know, I don't know, you've been out of the neighborhood now.
They put it in a terrible spot at 10, between Connecticut and New York, and the alleyway.
We never did get everything we asked for, but hey. And I'm sorry, I can get that information to you?
Yeah, I appreciate it. On, on this one, with regard to this route that we're talking about tonight, are you in favor of this route for the Bicycle Boulevard?
I don't care. Do you know, I don't have a dog in this fight, to be honest. I just want you to come and talk to us. Don't impose something on the neighborhood, like, look what happened. It's not as big a project at East 13th. But if you don't come talk to us...
Okay. Now, when we talked about this months ago, it was you and Phil Collison that were going, you know, shaking your heads going, okay, Collison said today he's for 13th Street.
Okay, whatever.
Okay. And you're saying you don't care?
And so, but we haven't had a vote at East Lawrence at the neighborhood meeting?
Okay.
About which street is a good street?
Okay. But you said that there was participation in the creation of the bike plan from the neighborhood?
Yes, which made it a bike route.
Okay. So it kind of, it kind of travels in sync with what the neighborhood has said before.
Um, yeah, that's a nice try, but...
No, I'm, I'm serious.
I'm sorry, Stuart, you and I are on different pages on this, and we have fought about this.
Well...
And you have yelled at me. But that being said, you still need to come to the neighborhood, and I'm not going to get you to make me say, this is all all right, because I don't feel that way.
And I appreciate you letting me know, Katie. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Can I just add something here?
Yeah, go ahead.
That's one of the reasons I brought up was the neighborhood, where the neighborhood association is going to be notified, because I have been working with Ted a little bit on this and trying to get opinions from East Lawrence as to the contact and where's the, the consistency in the contact for the neighborhood associations. What I'm seeing is that's where we seem to be off, is that there's no consistent policy or procedure on when a neighborhood association is supposed to be contacted. It seems as though, on the planning side, they do have, maybe do have a little bit more policy written out. I'm not seeing it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Amanda, I'm not seeing it on the engineering side, that there's actually a written policy that says, this is what we do, A, B, C, D, before we go through with a project.
You, you're correct. And I know that it's currently on the list of things that we are working on very soon. We realize that there's a need for that, and we want to be consistent, no matter what type of project it is, whether it's a waterline project. Obviously, you might have different levels of project and different levels of public engagement that, that's needed for that, but we realize that's a need, and it's definitely on the radar as something that's a priority to get worked out quickly, so.
Because the meetings I've had with you, as well as others, I'm not seeing any malicious intent, it's just, there's just not anything guiding us to do that. And I would hope that you would work together with the other departments that also go through this, so we have a consistent message going out to the community.
Yeah, and one of the people I think who's going to help is the MPO, they have a public engagement.
Yes, they do.
So they're going to help us with that effort. We have a group put together that's, one of the items we're going to work on is that, that plan, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Other public comment?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm David Hamby, current Chair of the Lawrence Douglas County MPO Bicycle Advisory Committee, but I'm here talking on my, on my behalf, not on their behalf. Appreciate you moving this project forward, putting money and budgeting for this type of project. I just wanted to say I'm in support of it and look forward to seeing this move ahead. Thank you.
Hi, City Commission Mayor, I'm Jackie Becker. I'm a longtime resident of Lawrence. I'm a fairly longtime resident of East Lawrence, and I'm a lifelong cyclist. I was a member of ELLNA for a really long time. I was on the member of the BAC, which is the Bicycle Advisory Committee, which was dissolved a few years ago. So for a long time, there definitely was a strong connection with, at least, East Lawrence and bicycling what was going on in the community. Through the changes in that, obviously, it sounds like some bits and pieces may have been lost in the neighborhood, but as a resident of East Lawrence and as a cyclist, I am beyond thrilled and truly stand by that 13th Street is the right street for this Bicycle Boulevard. It's a wide street, it's a flat street, it has some traffic calming at Burroughs Trail. I think that's the right street where a family, someone with a disability, someone walking can have easy access to get to that trail, which leads to the loop. And I find that 13th Street as a Bicycle Boulevard is one of the really important streets that, along with the loop, will lead to crossing and a greater way to get to our downtown district, and the easier way to get to campus, and a way to get to Haskell, because it takes you to loops. You're hitting education, you're hitting commerce, you're hitting everything in our community. And I would love to see 13th Street be a little bit slower, and I think through traffic calming and through Bicycle Boulevard, that will happen. So, thanks, looking forward to it all.
Appreciate it.
Hello, Mayor, thank you, and Vice Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Bill Anderson, and I am a former member of the, before said, Lawrence Bicycle Advisory Committee, and currently serve in the MPO Lawrence Douglas County Bicycle Advisory Committee. I want to apologize to the neighborhood associations, because I, I truly feel that communication is, is absolutely important as we go forward with any of these. I, I do know that there were many public meetings when we had the Pedestrian Bicycle Issues Task Force, community meetings, and there were public surveys. And not to say that you had to know about those, but at the same time, I think that there has been efforts over the decades to inform the public as we're moving forward, but maybe we haven't been, as they say, forthright in a consistent way to communicate. I want to say that I do encourage you to support the 13th Street alignment from Massachusetts to Haskell. And I'm always willing to discuss this any further with you.
Thank you, Bill. Other public comment on this issue?
Gary Weber, 907 Murrow Court, speaking for myself. This is a great plan. I'm really happy to see the Bicycle Boulevards moving forward. I want to thank Amanda and Engineering for the work they've done. And I, I like both alignments, everything looks really good. I want you, to encourage you to sign the contract for the study that they plan to do. This is our first Bicycle Boulevard. It's, it's really critical that we do it correctly, and it's really critical that we communicate with people involved and with the city as a whole, to let them know, to educate them what a Bicycle Boulevard is, but also to get their buy-in so that it's not just the city building this Boulevard, but everybody. So please, I would encourage you to, to sign the contract for the study and do the study. We may not have to do it in future Bicycle Boulevards, but it's really critical that we do it on this one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much. Back to the Commission.
Well, I, reviewing this and having these, having had these discussions, actually for several months with the 21st Street neighborhood, as well as the East Lawrence neighborhood, I have to admit, I thought there was maybe a better route than 13th Street. And I, I was thinking 14th Street was a really good route. And having taken both of those, I still thought 14th Street was a nice route, because it's a very quiet street. However, getting all the history that we recent, that we have tonight, that was given to us, as well as some information that I received from some community members who are very much into bikeways, bike, bike routes and so forth, it, it seems pretty obvious to me that there's, there's such a strong history for 13th Street that I can easily support that. And I, I also agree with Gary regarding the idea that we need to make sure this one, since this is our first one, that we need to make sure it's done correctly. So I did ask staff earlier day about the cost for this design, because it seemed very high. And I, I felt, I feel like they, they're providing much more services and just basic design services, and that's the difference here, that we would see from a normal street design, that, and we need this extra engagement with the community and, as well as understanding how these Bike Boulevards work, and that we get it right this first time. Because maybe in the future, we would need this level of design services, so to speak. So I, I can support this.
I was out on my bike today, and I did both 14th Street and 13th Street. I, kind of with the Vice Mayor, I kind of liked 14th better, but frankly, there are folks in the audience who spend a lot more time on their bikes than I spend on mine. And I have a lot of confidence in the people who are, who are doing the biking. And I also was on 21st Street. I'm really excited about these Bike Boulevard projects. I'm really happy with this contract. The concern that I have is the communication with the neighborhoods. And, and, you know, I guess I have to bear a little bit of responsibility for that myself. I mean, I'm in a position where I should have been more proactive. And, and so, you know, I got to look and say, what am I going to try to do better? So that's, that's on me. But this is a very significant thing for our community. We really need to do this, and we need to do it right. We need to make sure that we deal with the concerns of the neighborhoods, of the funeral directors, of everybody who's going to be affected by this, so that, as Gary said, it's a community when, not just something the city's doing.
If we're going to do it, we got to do it right, because if we want more of these in the future and we don't do these right, it's not going to happen. I think that we owe it to all of our multimodal transportation in the community to really step up and make this work. I think that includes looking at maybe bigger processes and communication with the neighborhoods and ensuring that we're doing what we need to do in order to communicate this effectively, because that's also going to impact what happens with these in the future as well.
Thank you for your work on this.
And thank you. Thanks.
I entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the City Manager to execute a contract with Alta Planning and Design for the design of 21st and 13th Street Bicycle Boulevard project.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ananda, second from Vice Mayor Larson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I might ask you real quick, if it's okay, for Amanda to find a little bit of additional information about some work that's coming up. It's going to be presented to the Transportation Commission next month, and then the City Commission in December. If you don't mind taking a...
I think that'd be fine, Brendan.
Okay. So I'd ask her to talk about the upcoming, I'm going to mess up the name here, but Neighborhood Traffic Management Policy?
Program.
Program. And maybe just a little bit about the Complete Streets Policy as well, because I think it'd be good for some of the neighborhood advocates to hear, hear about those and hear about the process of consideration for approval of those, and how they might change the way that we do this work. I think one of the issues here that Katie pointed, pointed to is the fact that this is a 12-year-old traffic calming policy. Priorities have changed in the last 12 years, priorities have changed really in the last couple of years. And we're trying to accomplish, we're trying to accomplish kind of a two-for-one deal here, traffic calming, pedestrian and bikeway improvements, and accomplish those goals. And I don't think we're quite set up from a policy standpoint to be able to do that. So if Amanda just give a real quick briefing on what's coming up?
Now, this is a little bit, I wasn't really prepared, so it's a little bit off the cuff. But at the November 5th Transportation Commission meeting, and then hopefully the December 4th City Commission meeting, we plan to bring these in, in a lot more detail to you, but we've basically, we've been talking about that traffic calming policy and how it's old, and we really need to do something more comprehensive. That's what we're going to recommend, become that Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. Be a much more comprehensive program that deals more than with just engineering. A lot of our things right now are only engineering. There's a lot more to it, there's education, there's encouragement, evaluation, enforcement. So all of those things need to be thought of holistically, really, to make an impact. We also want to try to impact more than just one street at a time, because often we do one street, and then the next year, the next street wants it, and then... one street, and then the next year, the next street wants it. And so, we want to be able to go into neighborhoods and try to make a difference, and be a little more responsive, so that if the neighborhood does come with a concern, and they're selected to be part of the program, that we can right away start working on that work, so people don't move out of the neighborhood, and suddenly it's lost all support, because that's happened on several of these traffic calming projects. So, that's one of the policies. The other one's the Complete Streets policy. That's been being worked on for over a year with Subcommittee of Transportation Commission. And so, that's really, we already have one currently. It's just kind of refining that policy a little bit, adding some more into the evaluation than the data, and then actually adding a checklist in also, that can be used by city staff, to make sure that we're really making the best choices when we're looking at projects. And then, kind of on top of that, we're looking at the traffic ordinances in the city, and kind of how long it's taking us to respond to people, because of the process that we have laid out by ordinance, that every sign is an ordinance. So, we're also looking at that, and maybe recommending some changes to that, to help us be more responsive to the residents. So, all of those things, I think, together, will hopefully allow us to be a little more nimble with this stuff, and respond better, and have a little more engagement with the neighborhoods. So, that's our hope, is that we can bring all that as one package to this Commission, and get some feedback. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Brendan.
Is there a public comment on that?
No. Number four. Consider adopting on First Reading Charter, number 46.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Danielle Bushcutter, currently serving as the interim Finance Director. So, the action that we have before you tonight is consider adopting on First Reading Charter Ordinance 46, and repealing Charter Ordinance 27. So, just to give a little bit of background, I think Charter Ordinance 27 was first adopted in November of 1992, and so I really view this as kind of a cleanup of that ordinance, to help it more closely align with our current practices today. So, there are really two changes that Charter Ordinance 46 would have, that Charter Ordinance 27 does not currently have in place. The first of which is that it would remove the requirement of the Commission to annually set general obligation borrowing limits by resolution for authorized capital projects under this Charter Ordinance. So, currently, what we do is we bring forward a resolution that identifies projects, and identifying those specific projects and a not-to-exceed amount in that ordinance, before we actually issue those general obligation bonds. And then, we have to come back a second time, when we're actually ready to issue those bonds, and bring that resolution back before you. So, to kind of align this better with our annual budget process and CIP process, where we identify through that process what the projects are that we plan on issuing general obligation bonds for, would help streamline some staff processes. And then, we'd only come to the Commission then, when we're actually ready to issue those general obligation bonds. So, we're kind of, we're streamlining the process that we currently have to use under the existing Charter Ordinance. The second thing that it does is it expands the type of projects that we are able to issue general obligation bonds for. So, currently, Charter Ordinance 27 is relatively limited in that scope, and this goes a step beyond to better align with how we're using general obligation bonds today, to issue debt for things like streets and sidewalks, and a variety of transportation-related items. So, I will note that because it is a Charter Ordinance, that there are some additional steps that have to be fulfilled for it to actually be implemented and in place, provided that you all are supportive of moving this forward. So, it does require approval of two-thirds vote of the Commission, and it must be published twice in the Lawrence Journal world. And then, there is a 60-day protest period that must be allowed as well. So, I'm happy to answer questions on this. Like I said, I think it's really cleanup and updating our ordinances with the processes that we currently have in place, but I'm happy to answer questions. We also have Gina Recoff with Gilmore &amp; Bell, who we worked very closely with on this ordinance, and in terms of all of the legal parameters that we have to follow regarding issuance of general obligation debt, she's, I'm sure, also more than happy to answer any of your questions on this item.
Questions? Can you explain again how this broadens the scope of the borrowing?
Yeah. So, in the ordinance, there's additional provisions that we have added to include things like streets, levee and dam maintenance, that are not currently identified in Charter Ordinance 27. So, we've added those additional types of projects into this Charter Ordinance.
Okay. So, do we have to specify the street when we do that?
I'll let Gina answer that one.
Good evening, Gina Recoff with Gilmore &amp; Bell. Mayor, you will have to still describe the project in a way that, you know, anyone and their grandmother could understand what the project is. So, those sorts of, you know, describing the process, identifying the specific streets that will be improved with the general obligation bond funding, that part of the process is still going to be required. The, I would maybe describe it just a little bit differently than Danielle, in that the Charter Ordinance does, as between Charter Ordinance 27 and Charter Ordinance 46 that's being proposed, the scope of projects are being expanded. However, they're not being expanded beyond the scope of projects that may be funded with general obligation bonds under other Kansas statutes. And so, you know, from that perspective, it's just that we use a whole host of Kansas statutes. I would say maybe 20 different enactments, every time we're getting ready to do a general obligation bond issue. And so, we have to figure out which act applies. And there may be, you know, multiple administrative processes that we need to follow in order to finance a specific type of project. And really, what this Charter Ordinance does is to streamline the process that we need to follow in order for you to authorize staff and to move forward with the general obligation bonding process. I would say, as a practical matter, you know, with respect to a resolution that the governing body would review and approve to authorize the funding of a project with general obligation bonds, that, you know, that authority that you would give is going to look almost identical to like it always has looked. It's just, instead of reciting a specific Kansas statute, we're going to recite the Charter Ordinance as your authority to issue the general obligation bonds for that project. The process that we typically follow, where the Commission gives authority to fund a project with general obligation bonds, and then we come back not too many weeks before we actually sell the bonds, and you say, yes, we like these projects, we like, you know, this amount of funding, go ahead and go forward with the bond transaction. That will remain exactly the same, and this Charter Ordinance doesn't change that part of the process.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
So, will this get rid of that situation we had this summer, where we had to rename those streets, or change the designation of those streets, so we won't have to do that anymore?
That's correct. The Charter Ordinance will permit general obligation bond funding for streets, under the authority of the Charter Ordinance. So, you know, you could always choose to use the Main Trafficway Act as authority to issue general obligation bonds, but this process will be more streamlined than the Main Trafficway Act in order to issue bonds for street projects. Yes.
That's good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Public comment on this issue? Okay, back to the Commission. I like this. I think we ought to do it.
I think so.
Move that we adopt on First Reading Charter Ordinance number 46.
We have a motion for Commissioner Herbert, second for Commissioner Ananda. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And last, consider approving the results in definition matrix.
Do we need to specifically repeal 27?
It does, the ordinance.
My adoption does that.
Thank you, Sheri. Good question.
Thanks.
All right. Good evening. Once again, Mayor and Commissioners, I'm now taking that hat off and stepping into Strategic Projects Manager hat with this next item. So, I do have a brief PowerPoint, but I promise to keep it short. So, back in March of 2017, the City Commission adopted their strategic plan, which included seven critical success factors and eight priority initiatives. One of those priority initiatives was related to the implementation of priority-based budgeting. So, what we're bringing forward to you tonight is a step that we need your action on, before we can move forward with the implementation of this. So, here's a general kind of timeline and process that we're going to go through internally as staff, related to the implementation of priority-based budgeting, which we fully anticipate being ready to go before our 2020 budget process. So, we're able to use this as our budgeting tool to work through that budget. So, currently, staff is wrapping up the program inventory, which is step one of this, which is really just identifying what programs it is that the city offers. So, we ask departments to really look at their operation as a whole, identify what programs it is they're offering to the community. The second step is to actually allocate costs according to those identified programs. So, that is the next step that as staff, we're working on internally, and we have a training coming up to kind of move through that piece of the process. Now, those final three steps relate to scoring. So, we will score each of the programs we have identified against a scoring matrix, and that's what we're asking you to act on tonight, to make sure that you're comfortable with that matrix that we're using to actually score all of these programs, which is then what will be used to determine what quartile every program that we have falls in. So, to give kind of a high-level view of something, a report, or something that could be coming back to you in early 2019 for the 2020 budget, is something like what you're seeing up on the screen. So, these first two lines are the 2018 and 2019 Quartile I programs for this fictional community, and the dollars associated with providing those programs. The next two are Quartile II programs, Quartile III, and Quartile IV. So, you can see what, how much you're spending on each of those quartiles, based on the programs that have been identified and fall within each of those quartiles. So, I think sometimes it helps to know what you're working towards, to be able to work back a little bit. So, we worked really closely with our consultant to identify and build this matrix that we're going to be showing to you tonight, and asking for you to approve. And it's primarily based on our strategic plan. So, we tried to take language directly from the current strategic plan that we have in place, and further refine that, so that we have specific definitions and results that we can score our various programs against. So, this is what the matrix looks like, and I think there's an attachment of this in the packet, because I know this is really difficult to read. But we'll get into each one a little more, and if you want more detail, we can certainly go into it further, but I'll keep it high level, at least initially. So, the first, so we're going to go through it kind of section by section here. So, the first is Effective Governance and Professional Administration, and you'll notice that this aligns with one of the critical success factors we've identified in our strategic plan.
Can I interrupt you a second?
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
The thing that I didn't understand when I was looking at the attachment is, so you're on the first column, but does the first column mean something?
It does.
Okay.
And this is where it gets a little more challenging and detailed. So, the first column is what we will score our internal services against, and those other four columns is what we will score our external-facing programs against.
So, that's why it was a different color.
So, that's why it's a different color, and that's why you see it's a little more internal service-oriented than the others. So, that would be things like IT, HR.
Right.
The programs that they have will be scored against that scoring criteria, whereas youth sports, if that's a program, will be scored against these other.
So, is, do the four other columns have natural priority already in it, or does the first, actually the second column, but the first outside column actually mean it's the top priority in the second column, or?
No. No. This is simply how it worked out, based on, when we were working through our strategic plan, I think it closely aligns with how they're outlined number-wise in our strategic plan.
So, those four columns, each box, there's no ranking in there at all?
Correct. Nope.
It's just a list.
That's just what they are.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what I wasn't sure, I understood. Thank you.
Yes.
Do each one of the columns, or, I'm sorry, each one of the columns represent one of our, the plan, the strategic plan?
Yes. So, each one is meant to align with the critical success, with a critical success factor. But you'll notice that there are two of them that are actually housed within Effective Governance and Professional Administration. And we did that intentionally, so that we didn't have a matrix that was so large, it was overwhelming. And we thought things like the fiscal stewardship fit well within Effective Governance and Professional Administration, for how we're going to be using it throughout this process.
Okay. That makes sense.
Yeah. All right. Any other?
Well, Core Utilities is over on the outside, so, I don't know. Maybe I'm asking early my questions. I think that I should let you finish.
Okay. All right. I'll finish, and then feel free to ask away.
Okay.
Okay. So, these are the different results and definition areas that have been identified for Effective Governance and Professional Administration. And just to highlight, we've kind of already touched on this. The Leadership Definition aligns with the definition that we have for Critical Success Factor, Effective Governance and Professional Administration. Collaborative Solutions, we house that, again, under Effective Governance and Professional Administration, even though it's a separate identified Critical Success Factor, along with the Financial Stewardship, because we thought those fit well within this scope for what we're going to be using it for. And so, you'll notice that there are different boxes that are embold, and those were our attempt to kind of identify that these are taken from the strategic plan in one form or another. For example, we have Natural and Historic Resources, which, if you read at the very end of the Innovative Infrastructure and Asset Management definition that we have in the strategic plan, that's where that language is being pulled from. So, we just tried to highlight those areas that we're directly pulling from different areas of our strategic plan. We also worked pretty closely, so this is Safe, Healthy, and Welcoming Neighborhoods. We also worked closely with our consultant to identify best practices. So, they've obviously worked with a lot of communities that have gone through this process. So, we really tried to rely on their expertise in terms of what are some good definitions that we can include in here. So, some of those ones that you see that are not bolded are from some best practices, and what we've identified as still fitting within what we thought the intent and scope of the Critical Success Factor, and what we've heard from you all. Economic Growth and Security, again, I'm not going to go into this too much, but really centered around development and the local economy. And then, finally, the commitment to core services kind of gets at some of those other core services that we have within the community here. So, I can go into each of those more if you want to, but really, what I wanted to make sure that we were on the same page with, is that you were comfortable with the matrix before we start using this to actually implement priority-based budgeting, and to make sure that there's not anything that, as you look at it, you go, you are really missing X, Y, or Z. So, that's really why we wanted to bring this forward to you all, and get your approval on this, to make sure that there wasn't something that you really thought was missing in that matrix that we're going to be using. So, that's all I have, unless you guys have some additional questions?
Questions?
So, all the boxes are ranked the same way. So, I was just thinking about tonight, we had the Safe Bar. What would, what boxes would that pull from? And so, I guess my question is?
question is, if you have a program that pulls from more boxes than from another box, then it'll go more naturally to the first quartile, if I'm understanding right?
Mm-hmm.
So do you have any idea at all? I guess we just got to see it in practice a little bit.
Yeah, and, and I think really, as we go through this entire process, so we, because it's our first time going through this, we really encourage departments to have maybe broader programs than specifically Safe bar. That would probably be included in a different program that the, that a department manages. So we, we tried to keep it broad so that, the intent being, when we bring this forward initially, that it's really a conversation starter, and we can look at things and go, you know, this looks, this looks a little odd, let's, let's talk about why maybe this didn't score well, or we can, we can start to have some of those conversations. So I think at this first go-through of this process, we'll be learning a lot of those things kind of together as staff and as a governing body, in terms of how do we really want to utilize this tool? But I think it's going to be difficult until we get to that final kind of scoring phase where we say, okay, here, here are the results, this is what we found, to be able to start to have those conversations. If, if that, it doesn't really address your question, but I think that's something that as staff we've talked about quite a bit internally, as it relates to implementation of this.
How does this impact innovation, starting new projects, new programs? I guess that's a pretty broad question.
It's a very broad question.
So when you're looking at these, this matrix, and, you know, someone in Parks and Rec wants to start a new program to increase representation in groups, sports, et cetera, but that's going to cost money, I'm just wondering, you know, if you're looking at the projects that we already have and balancing those on that matrix, how does innovation fit into that?
I, I think it's, I think it's able to be included in it, and it, in all honesty, may provide some additional guidance to, to staff. I know internally we talk a lot about the strategic plan and how to move those initiatives forward, and how do things relate to the different critical success factors? So I think if it's something that aligns well with that, then that's something that can be used as kind of a driving factor to say, hey, I really think this fits here, here, and here, let's have a discussion about including that. The flip side is, I think it'll also highlight things that maybe we didn't think about when we were going through the strategic planning process, and when we review the strategic plan again in a little over a year, it might be a good opportunity to say, hey, we noticed throughout this implementation of priority-based budgeting that maybe we're missing this thing, maybe we want to expand a definition to include X, Y, or Z. So I, I think it helps with that conversation, moving that conversation forward.
Yeah, I think it would be really interesting if we had a few programs that we already knew that the commission has a consensus on, and just kind of go through here and just how, see how they stack up. It would be really interesting to see that in practice, small practice, but, and probably something we, like I said, we all have consensus on.
If we had consensus, it would score very high.
Theoretically, that's what we would be proving, right?
That's what you'd hope.
Mayor, I might just add, Danielle can speak to this too, but keep in mind that the scoring starts with the departments. So the departments will provide a score to every single one of their programs based on all of these criteria. Then there are peer review teams that are made up from cross-departmental groups that will look at each one of them individually, so there'll be a governance team, there'll be a, whatever the neck, you know, the blue across the top, and each will have their own team. And they'll receive special training, the training that Danielle mentioned, about how to kind of do a gut check, or I call it a smell test, to make sure that, you know, kickball isn't scoring super high as a program in economic development, or those kinds of things. That's maybe not a good example, because it's probably not a specific program, but. So I think that will help kind of, like you said, the things that everybody has consensus on are, that are programs that are going to, they'll make a lot of sense when they show up in that first quartile. I think there's a lot of details too, that Danielle didn't get into, that, about the way the tool kind of goes through and weights things, so that you'll notice there's some definitions where there's six definitions and other that only have four. You know, the points possible get, get adjusted so that you're not penalizing programs in, that are only showing up in those columns that only have four definitions. So I think the staff has worked really closely with Resource X, we have weekly meetings with them, where we're talking through all these exact same conversations, and, and that's why we wanted to show you kind of that end process of how the quartiles will play out. One other thing about those quartiles is they're relative, so it's not like there's a threshold where you have to score a 50 to get to be in the first quartile, you know, it's a bar, it's a bell graph, so they'll help us work through that. There's also a final review step where when we look at that, we get to kind of determine where those breaking points are. So if, when we rank them all in order, there's one that's maybe one-point difference, we get to decide, okay, well, maybe we don't break the difference between first and second quartile there, we, we go down to where there's a 10-point break. So I think the process has enough checks and balances in place that we can kind of do those kind of gut checks, smell tests as we go. But like Danielle said, our main point of bringing you all into the conversation at this point was similar to how we did with the CIP, that before we went off and, and took on this, this great amount of staff work to, to score based on these criteria, we wanted to make sure that you didn't see anything glaring that was missing.
Well, the bell curve was getting part of what I was trying to ask, but couldn't figure out how to ask it, yeah.
I'd like to talk about one box on the matrix. It's on the bottom right-hand corner, it's welfare, and I'll invite you to take a look I don't generally walk around with copies of articles of the Kansas Constitution in my backpack, but I just happened to have them today, so here they are. I've got more copies if anybody else wants to take a look at.
Will you put that on the L mode too?
Yeah.
They're past its own deck. Oh, you didn't. Thanks.
And, no, I don't have one, but it'll be on your.
Here.
Okay, so, this is Article VII, Section IV of the Kansas Constitution. And this, the deal on the matrix is welfare, and it says, "Equitably provides for the health, welfare, and basic needs of the community." And the Article VII is Public Institutions and Welfare. And Section IV says, in part, "The respective counties of the state shall provide, as may be prescribed by law, for those inhabitants who by reason of age, infirmity, or other misfortune, may have claims upon the aid of society." So what I'm reading there is, "The respective counties of the state shall provide for the welfare." So my question to you is, what is the legal basis for the inclusion of "equally provides for the health, welfare, and basic needs of the community" by the city, when the Constitution places that obligation on the county?
We, we didn't take that perspective. We looked at some other communities and some definitions that they have, so we pulled that welfare language out of the definition of Commitment to Core Services and found some related definitions that other communities used related to that particular item, and put it in here. So we didn't approach it from that legal perspective, but it's certainly up to the prerogative of the commission if you want to exclude that particular category.
Well, I mean, I think it's something that we need to be cognizant of, because we have resource limitations, and we have our areas of responsibility as a city that don't really duplicate the areas of responsibility of the county. And so that's what I invite everyone to consider as we approve this matrix. I have concerns about this, because I think it's, much of it is the responsibility of Douglas County, not of the City of Lawrence.
Mayor, I would say, I think it's coming from the perspective of generally the definition of government is that we, we provide things to help advance the health, welfare, and safety of the community.
Like drinking water, like police.
Right.
And, and that's the context I would welcome.
Yes, that's the context.
But I'm not sure that that's the way the public would read this if they're reading our matrix.
And I think that, that if there's additional verbiage we need to put in there, I think then that would be a good conversation, but I, I think it was, that's why it's in the Core Service column.
Right, okay.
Is trying to get at that concept of, is this a, directly related to that, that government purpose of health, safety, and welfare?
And, and, and I'm just saying, I think it should be the context of the city responsibility.
Stuart?
Sure, yeah.
Is it a matter of semantics in some way? Like if it said health, well-being, and basic needs, would that be a different perspective for you?
I guess heading at welfare is problematic for me, okay? Just at the very start, okay? And, and I think probably adding some verbiage, saying that within the parameters of the role of the city in providing these services, rather than, and just, and again, what I'm doing is I'm saying, I think this is pertinent, I'd like to see it included somehow in this concept.
What's really interesting is, when I read it, the two words that strike me are "equitably provides." To me, that seems the defining point of this phrase even existing, is that we equitably provide for things. So I can understand what you're saying, welfare, we're not talking about welfare checks, you know, but I think maybe if we labeled it, well, I mean, to me, from my perspective, labeling that box more equity might be more getting at it what I think it's trying to say.
Diane, did you have something you wanted to add?
Commissioner Stone said exactly what I was going to suggest. Because I think we do spend a lot of time discussing equity as it relates to our, our services and how we're providing those to the community, maybe that's a good way to.
I think that would be wonderful.
Would it be equitable services?
Equitable provision of services to the entire community, something like that. I, I like that lens much better than, than what is in that box at this point.
I, I think some of, while I agree with the equity piece, I think some of this goes to the struggle that we've had to define core services, and I think this is a way for this process to, to maybe help in that conversation as to what is a core service. And again, I think that's why including those phrases are there, is so that a program that doesn't directly address health, welfare, or, or what is it, health, welfare, or basic needs, wouldn't score the same as one that would. And that's not to say it's not an important thing for the city to provide, it just may not be a core service. So I, I almost would suggest adding an equity box, or, you know, an equity definition that gets at that piece, but I, and it may be semantics, it may be that the scoring comes out the way the scoring comes, whether the, whatever the heading of the box says.
The, the, when I first read about equity provides for health, what I thought was drinking water, and sent, you know, the kinds of services that we provide, it turns out drinking water's up above availability of safe drinking water. So I was like, well, maybe that's not what they're thinking about. But I mean, when I think about community health, I think about those basic services around water, sanitation, those kinds of things. I don't think of, you know, frankly, healthcare as being a city responsibility. So, and, and again, this is something that the public will be viewing, and we need to make sure that we're being clear when we communicate with the public about what our role is in providing health, welfare, and basic needs.
I've got one last thing. Just because the program, or maybe let me back up and say, one of the things that kind of, as communities master those levels of priority-based budgeting that our consultant talked about, is that conversation about who should provide the service. And so it may be that, that that's a, that's a conversation that's going to come, that because there are other people or other agencies that have that responsibility, it doesn't need to be a core service that the city provides. It's still a core service, but maybe it's one that we allow our partners to provide, and maybe this scoring process puts it in a Quartile III or a Quartile IV, which makes it an easier decision for you all to say, hey, maybe there is a partner or agency out there that could provide that core service to our community.
Or is responsible for providing that core service.
Right. I don't, I don't know if I've helped the conversation or just made it more.
I think you see. So are we looking at changing that welfare to?
Maybe we can let staff work on it a little bit.
I think that'd be a good idea.
We can also ask our consultant to watch this video and come back to us with, if she's not watching right now. Chris Fabian is probably going to text me in a minute and say, here's the suggestion, but we'll get with it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very comfortable with that.
I think that's good.
Speaking of which, did we have a box, a special box for collaboration? I see it's included in definitions.
Yeah, it's included in that first, that first one, the Effective Governance and Professional Administration.
Perfect.
Is where that Collaborative Solutions lies.
Excellent. Yeah, that's great.
I had one question. I didn't quite understand what the other pages were on this spreadsheet. There were three different pages?
I don't know why it uploaded like that.
Okay, so those two other pages aren't supposed to be part of it?
No, there, there was not supposed to be anything there, so you're not missing anything.
Spent a long time thinking about that. No, I didn't.
Sorry.
She's just showing off, that's all.
I'm trying to figure out how it worked.
I didn't, I didn't see that until today, yeah.
Other questions, comments, direction?
Do we want to do comments and direction before a public comment?
Oh, public comment, I'm sorry. We got public comment. Thank you, Commissioner.
We got one.
We got a live one. Yeah, so I know you're probably hoping to go early at the end of the night, but there's always somebody, right? Okay. So, first of all, I'd like to commend the, oh, sorry, Nick Kuzmic, 417 Alabama Street.
Thanks, Nick.
First of all, I'd like to commend the commission and staff for taking the plunge to really dissect the city's finances and make some probably hard decisions down the road. It's not an easy step to take, but will be a crucial investment that should pay off greatly in the years to come. I truly look forward to the progress that Resource X, I think that's her name, right, is going to make. I have a few details I'd like to bring up regarding the criteria matrix, just in case it's not yet set in stone, which I wrote this before, so maybe it is now set in stone. Overall, it looks really excellent, and I appreciate both the work that Resource X and the staff have already done to get to this point. My comments are meant to be constructive, and hopefully maybe offer some insight. First, I'd like to discuss the criteria under the Innovative Infrastructure and Management column. So I'm an engineer, of course, I was drawn to this one first. So there is one about providing for sustainable, well-planned, and future-focused infrastructure. It kind of goes on. In this case, the term "sustainable," I would say, is extremely important. Cities around the country are going broke trying to replace infrastructure that had to be used far beyond its intended lifespan, due to a lack of funding to maintain all the assets at the recommended frequencies. There is now a growing realization that we can no longer pay for infrastructure simply through more growth, especially when that growth has its own future infrastructure needs. Which brings me to the next criterion, develops and implements long-term plans for sustainable economic growth, blah, blah, blah. The provision of infrastructure assets in this particular criterion is pretty important, because when they go unmaintained, then we lose the productivity that they're meant to spur in the first place. An awful idea that shouldn't really be that novel is that it's been, it's been coming up pretty recently in urban design circles, is that you need to truly do the math on new planned developments and planned infrastructure. For example, will the property taxes from this subdivision cover its own roads' maintenance costs in perpetuity, or will bonds need to be reissued because the road was counted as an asset instead of a liability? All right. So finally, on the topic of the Economic Growth and Security, the fourth column, I believe, I'd like to point out a more general issue. The use of language such as preserving in regards to neighborhood development could be a slippery slope. Sure, we can definitely preserve beautiful historic architecture or natural resources to the benefit of, of everybody, but when we preserve entire neighborhoods under either restrictive zoning or even self-imposed HOA covenants, we are basically flying in the face of human and urban evolution. Throughout history, until the 1940s about, humans basically built cities to adapt to the conditions of the time. If more people needed to live by a railroad, for example, then that part of the town would become more dense. This all happened incrementally, just plot by plot, new story by new story, and, and is generally what has produced the neighborhoods that we all love today. But thankfully, another criterion down that column does mention community evolution. So I sincerely hope that this means our communities may be allowed to evolve to fit the future challenges, as long as preservation does not reign supreme.
Okay. Okay. Back to the question.
So, here soon, we're going to be reviewing our priority initiatives and where we are with those. And I know the last time that we did that, I mentioned that I wanted to kind of present my thoughts. And I've been very intentional in the way I've been thinking about how to present those things. I don't know the effect that could potentially have because I haven't come to a place where I'm ready to articulate that wholly. I was intending to be prepared when we review that conversation. And for me, it's because there's, I don't know how to describe it necessarily, but it's a framework and not something specific. And so, you know, as I'm, it's no secret that the things that I tend to talk about a lot are equity and sustainability. And when I'm looking at this, one, I'm thinking about how it will evolve over time and the implementation of those within the matrix and how that will work long-term. So, looking, you know, longer term than just this one instance in which we're putting this together, how is that plan to proceed? But then that overlaying framework, in my opinion, equity is not a specific issue. It is a framework from which we can work. And so, when we look at all of these, provides for sustainable, well-planned, and future-focused infrastructure that supports short-term and long-term community growth needs, for whom and to what impact? What are the questions that we need to be asking on each of these that we can often forget when we're not being intersectional in our thinking and on our implementation? And so, I don't know how to present that with that conversation coming up, particularly since I didn't come prepared tonight to have that conversation because I think that it is nuanced. I think that it takes a lot of forethought and that I want to be very intentional in how I present that. But I also want to present that when we're approving a matrix like this moving forward.
Well, it looks like we already have a correction to this. So, it'll have to come back to us. Do you think that in the next two, when we come back here, two, three weeks, whatever that is, that you might have it more figured out in your head how you want to propose it? Because I don't think, I don't think you would have too much pushback from any of us. We just need you to articulate perhaps better. And we, I mean, I want you to articulate it.
And that's in, I think it's in a couple of weeks, right, when we're reviewing that?
The 20th is like a month.
Okay.
So, what you're saying is maybe we should revisit the matrix? Do we have to? What's the timeline on the matrix?
We do need that approved sooner rather than later because we're going to start our department's scoring here pretty quickly. We're being trained on that next week with our consultant. But one thing I would will add is that...
Just like the programs and things, and the level and detail in which we will present the information is not set in stone, I don't think this matrix is set in stone either. I think it's one of those things that, as we continue to move and evolve with this process, will likely move and evolve with us. So, I don't think, even if we don't get all of those things articulated here, we may see that in the results and go, this is why we need to have X, Y, or Z in there. It may help facilitate some of those conversations. So, this will not be set in stone. It's not like you're making the decision tonight and then we're never going to look at it again. I think it will continue to evolve as our process evolves.
And I think that, you know, we heard we're actually having the conversation about resetting those initiatives or reviewing those initiatives in a serious way next fall, a year from now.
Right.
And so, I didn't know the extent to which that would have an impact. Additionally, it is a framework and not an additional piece. So, it's like an overlay, I guess. Or like the questions that we ask when we get a staff report, does it have a section that's for whom and to what impact?
Commissioner, I think we could go back through if there are specific places where adding the words that talk about equitable, you know, providing things equitably or adding in. Because I kind of agree with you that it's, it should be, every single one of these should have that as a component as you're talking about it. So, I kind of see where you're coming from. I don't know if that helps or if you're comfortable with us having, doing that work with consultant and not bringing it back, but that's something also that we could explore.
And it sounds like something that the five of us would need to come to consensus on. So, I don't know that implementing that kind of change would necessarily be warranted before discussion.
Yeah, I do see this as a dynamic process. And that this is just the first step and it's going to continue to modify, change, evolve. And even if we would wait till November to take a look at this again, I don't see us changing our strategic plan on our next meeting, November. I mean, the plan's going to be the plan for now. And then, as we move forward next year, then there's going to be an opportunity to have an in-depth discussion as what we actually want in that plan now, as things change.
Okay, so we probably need to do a motion on this. So, I guess I would move that we approve the matrix with the one box that I'd like to ask staff to take another stab at.
Is that a motion?
I move we approve the matrix and ask staff to go back and amend the welfare section.
Okay, second.
So, I moved, we have a second from Vice Mayor Larson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good, that's unanimous. Okay.
This isn't really a commission item, but there were a couple of presentations tonight that didn't, were on the agenda. Can you just make sure that they get on the agenda?
We'll follow up with that.
Thank you.
This isn't really a commission item either, but I'm going to do it anyway. As I said, I was on my bike today and there's a possum on the bike path between Burrows Trail and Moody Road. And it's not playing, it's dead. It's kind of gross, so I think we probably cleaned that stuff up.
On 19th?
On 19th Street, yeah. And, pardon?
19th where?
19th, it's in between Burrows Trail and Moody Road. And then, on the Haskell West sidewalk, just north of 19th Street, there's significant vegetation blocking the sidewalk. So, if somebody can get out there and take a look at that.
The west side of Haskell?
It's the west side of Haskell, just north of 19th Street. And I guess to get to the commission item, that possum's probably only been there a while, but that vegetation's been there quite a while. And there are a lot of city vehicles that travel south on Haskell Avenue. And I'm just wondering if anybody looks at that kind of stuff when they drive by? I mean, that's just north of Independence, Inc., folks. And I'd like to think that our city employees are on the ball when we have things like that blocking the sidewalk.
I think that's a good point, Mayor. I'm hoping that we can certainly remind our staff to be on the lookout for.
Thank you.
I mentioned, was it last week? Recently, that I am on the Sexual Violence Prevention Work Group. And continuing with our theme for the evening, I mentioned that we're working on a survey to be disseminated to the community. And we have that survey prepared and there is a link to a Survey Monkey survey associated with that. It's a broader community survey about understanding around sexual violence, safety in the community, et cetera. So, not sure how to communicate where that is or what that website is because it's not like, you know, www.filloutthesurvey.com by any means. But I do think that the more community members we have participating in that survey, the better that we can do in shifting that paradigm. And so, hopefully, that's something that we can get out there and get to the community members. I will certainly forward it to city staff so that it can go out to commissioners and others to be taken and hopefully out to all of our community members as well.
How long does the survey last?
It's a great question and I don't have a lot of those specifics at this point. I believe it's approximately 40 questions long.
I mean, is it open for like a month?
Yeah, I know what you meant, but that's all I got. I will, I will come with more information at our next meeting.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Other commission items? Okay, City Managers Report.
I will be brief here for you, Mayor and Commissioners. The, there's a summary here from the Chapel Hill delegation that recently visited Lawrence that a number of you were involved with. And I just thought it was a good summary of what they learned and it's always interesting to look through somebody else's eyes as they look at your community. I thought that their comments were interesting. We have the 2018 September Utility Billing Report for you listed there. The 2018 Sales Tax Report, you'll note we're just slightly behind the projected 2018 budget there in our sales to date. The Brick Paver Salvage Update, this was an inquiry from several citizens from a number of meetings ago and providing an update where we took those citizens and showed them what we're doing with the brick pavers, I think to everybody's satisfaction. There was a hands-free policy related to wireless communication devices that was requested at the Transportation Commission. There's an update for you on what that request was. What we're suggesting at this time is based on the traffic control issue that Ms. Sahin visited about this evening, that we wait on implementing any new policies, but kind of keep that in the mix as a pending request. Staff has created a new form to, for the citizens to provide information about any dangerous driving behavior in their neighborhoods. So, if there's any concerns about people speeding or other hazards that are in the neighborhood, this is the way to get that information to us. And so, we'll be getting out more information to publicize this ongoing. The Affordable Housing Advisory Board has put out a request for proposals related to the $200,000 in additional funds that you all had added to the 2018 budget in accordance with your request that that be non-capital items. So, they'll be considering those proposals and making a recommendation to you later in the year. There is a Governing Magazine article that deals with university communities. We thought may be of interest there. And related to future agenda items, at your next meeting on November the 6th, we'll have an ordinance that considers repealing the city auditor section of the code. And then, there's some other personnel-related policies that we'll have on for your discussion. And as was mentioned, the November 20th meeting will have the strategic plan update. And as far as work session items go, in November, you have the fire medical agreement with Douglas County, some staff providing you a summary of that information. The downtown camera policy will be back before you. And in December, a presentation from the Chamber on Economic Development Activities for this year and a update from the Lawrence Community Shelter. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Diane? Thank you, Diane. Sure, yeah, yeah, sure, yeah.
KT Wells, speaking only for myself. So, reading the City Managers Report, and I read about the tour of the, where the bricks are. When the bricks actually started coming out of East Lawrence, the 40,000 bricks that have come out, people, I'm sorry?
400,000.
400,000. People were like, oh, my God, and they're hauling them all away. And so, a lot of neighbors have been talking about where are they going and there's not a lot of trust. Everybody thinks they're going out to the landfill. So, I know I didn't trespass, but I took a tall ladder and a camera with the zoom lens and I found a place you can see them from outside and I took pictures for the neighborhood. So, there was proof that they weren't taking them to the landfill. Then I read that there's this VIP tour and nobody from the Board of East Lawrence was invited. Really? You know we care about bricks. It was another one of those things where somebody just forgot, hey, why don't we invite a board member of East Lawrence? They're very concerned and it's happening in their neighborhood. Come on. Anyway, I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Thanks, KT.
Brandon, maybe we can have a tour for the neighborhood?
I don't think we need one now. We got the pictures.
Okay. Okay. Other comments on the City Managers Report? Okay, calendar?
I wanted to mention, let me get back to it. There's a ribbon cutting for where I work at. The 23rd. So, even though I'm the one doing the ribbon cutting, you guys feel free to stop by.
Okay.
We have a small office, but we'll make room.
Thanks.
We should probably get on the calendar the, I don't know if it's a ribbon cutting or what, groundbreaking, it wouldn't be groundbreaking, but what we talked about tonight regarding, sorry.
The middle school?
Thank you, Billy Mills, Middle School, yeah.
November 30th.
Struggling to put my thoughts together, I'm back now with you, sorry. Briefly passed out, we're back. Billy Mills, I believe it is November 2nd or 3rd, whatever day is, the Saturday at 9:00 a.m. We should probably get that on the calendar, just so that I can remember.
I did want to ask one thing on the calendar items. On Monday, we had the new training class for the police induction, I guess it was. And that wasn't on the calendar, is that something that we typically put on the calendar?
We probably should be more consistent with that, so I'll double check on that and make sure.
I would appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, I think we have had it there on the past.
I think so, because I missed, you know, Mayor told me about it and I'm glad I caught it, but...
Sorry about that.
I do rely on these, yeah, yeah, I didn't.
It was exciting. We have nine new recruits and there were five recruits from the county. So, we have the 40th class and they were sworn in on Monday.
They were pinned?
They were sworn in.
Yeah, they're not pinned yet.
They're not pinned yet.
Oh, okay.
It begins their training.
It begins their training.
Oh, okay.
I always want to ask them, do they really know what they're getting into?
No, you don't want to ask them.
No, they looked great, they really did. Looks like a great group.
Any other calendar items? Okay.
Move, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Soden, second from Commissioner Herbert, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.